This meeting of the Select Board is called to order on January 9, 2024 at 6:00 PM. This meeting is being held in person and/or remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023 and all other applicable laws temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. Is anyone else recording this evening? Okay, for the record, participating this evening, myself, Liz Klein, Chair, Joe Fisher, and Bill Ramsey. First on the agenda is executive session under Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Department of Public Works Supervisors, Teamsters Local 25. The Board will reconvene in an open session after the executive session. Before I entertain a motion to go into executive session under Item 2 of the agenda, I hereby declare that discussion of this agenda item in an open session may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the town.
So with that, I'd like to make a motion to enter executive session under Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Department of Public Works Supervisors, Teamsters Local 25. The Board will reconvene in open session after the executive session.
Second.
Roll call vote, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm in as well, going into executive session. We'll be back soon. Okay, we're back. 6:25 PM. Next on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you're willing and able, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next, Jack Manning, if you don't mind coming up. I'm just gonna have Jack give a brief overview regarding what we were discussing in the executive session with Department of Work Supervisors.
Thanks, Liz. So we just finished our negotiations with the bargaining unit, the DPW Supervisors. We worked on a three-year contract, and the negotiations literally just ended within the last week or two. They started about nine months ago, and we had a very robust group of discussions over that period of time. The union came in with a number of asks that we found very reasonable, and in fact, the whole process was very reasonable, quite frankly. It was a very refreshing conversation this time around with the Supervisors, and there's a new Teamster representative by the name of Nancy Campbell who did, I think, a terrific job representing the interests of the unit, but at the same time, I think she was very empathetic to the limitations that the town had in order to satisfy what needed to be done for the town, as well as trying to recognize that something needed to be done for the unit as well. So it was a good negotiation. To streamline it down to just a few thoughts, our major objective was holding the line on salaries, and we did that. We arrived at a 3-3-3 over a three-year period. There was no equity adjustment in this case, and we always compare ourselves to 19 other towns, and we're well in the top 10 amongst Supervisors and the other towns, so there was no need for an equity adjustment. They understood it, even though they did originally ask for it. Some of the other items were rather minor in monetary impact, some thoughts on longevity and holidays, and a few other items, sick leave. The other thing that was important to the unit was to do something to compensate the Supervisors who have to answer the phone on off hours. And this was documented over a year period. We were able to look at the documentation that one of the Supervisors had put together for us, and there was no question that, in this particular case, and I think in the case of a number of the Supervisors, they were answering calls and spending time, their own time, on town business. So we arrived at a rather modest stipend to take care of that effort, and then once we got there, we were able to close the discussions very, very successfully.
Excellent. Well, thank you, Jack, and thank you to Karen, who I know also helped with these negotiations.
As if I could just say, so there's the team, Karen and myself, of course, working tirelessly in some cases, trying to get this thing done, but we couldn't have done it without Randy, obviously, who gave us tremendous input right from the get-go, Tom, who did a tremendous job, and Lisa Campbell, who also supported us tremendously. It was a real team effort. And then on the unit side, Mike Mullen and Steve, I can't think of Steve's last name.
Steve Dempsey.
Steve Dempsey.
Thank you, Steve Dempsey. Both did a great job representing the unit's point of view. So all around, a thank you to everybody. Everybody walked into the discussions with an open mind, and we had a great negotiating session.
Excellent. Well, thank you to the whole team for all the work, and thank you for recognizing not only how important their work is, but it is round the clock, and we certainly want them to feel valued and compensated, so thank you. Joe, do you have any questions or comments?
No, I've reviewed the document. I'm satisfied that it's consistent with the Select Board's policies. I'm ready to proceed.
Great, Bill?
Okay, no questions. I've reviewed the MOA. I've also reviewed the previous collective bargain agreement, and just want to thank you and Karen for your great work on this negotiation. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Excellent. I'm ready to take a motion, then.
I make a motion to sign the memorandum of agreement with the Department of Public Works Supervisors, Teamsters Local 25, effective from July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2026.
Second.
Roll call vote, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm in as well. Passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Jack. Thank you, Karen.
Good seeing you.
Thank you, Randy. Okay, next on the agenda, approval of minutes. I believe we have two sets.
I've reviewed the 19th and the second. I'm prepared.
I am too. Ready to proceed.
I'm prepared as well.
So I'll make a motion to approve the minutes dated December 19, 2023.
Second.
Roll call vote, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm in as well.
I'd make a motion to approve the minutes dated January 2, 2024.
Second.
Roll call vote, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm in as well. Excellent, thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is the cell service update. Art, do you want to walk us through this?
Yes, thank you. As you know, there's been a lot of interest in improving cell service in Hingham, and there's been a lot of work invested by a number of folks inside, but critically outside of Town Hall as well. Just wanted to share four updates that reflect some progress from where we were when we last did come together. I'll try to be brief, but I think that taken together, they reflect some meaningful progress. First, I'd like to mention a property in town, 30 Green Street, which is owned and controlled by Verizon. They've recently completed a Section 106 review of their facility oriented on allowing for the installation of cell service infrastructure, and they intend, at this point, to advance a plan to deploy a wireless service there at some point during 2024. Don't have a firm date in front of us, but I think the path is clear for them to take their next step, which would be through our permitting process. We do expect that on deployment at that site, Verizon's infrastructure should improve cell service in North Hingham to include the square, the harbor, and nearby areas. The second on my list relates to a proposed zoning amendment, which is really important for us as a community to allow for the deployment of cell service infrastructure going forward. It's a proposed zoning amendment that's been under Planning Board review for our town meeting in April of this year, and this particular amendment includes two elements that relate to location that really matter. One is to allow, by special permit, small cell facilities in any zoning district, and another is to allow, again, by special permit, cell towers in the official and open space district, which includes town-owned lands which may host open space, and these town lands might also host town-owned buildings. These changes are important for a couple of reasons. First, just thinking most directly about allowing for small cell facilities to be located in any zoning district, it will support 5G deployment and make more connectivity, voice, and data available over time, of course, under control and supervision through the special planning process, and allowing for, again, by special permit, cell towers in the official and open space district will ultimately make any effort on the part of the town to attract interest in locating infrastructure on town-owned property be more attractive. It's something we're certainly looking forward to pursuing later this year through an RFP and hopefully a lease, and I'll touch on both of those a little bit more down the road. As I think we talked in some detail when we met last time, many of us have been in extended conversations with cell service providers or infrastructure providers who make facilities available to the cell service providers themselves, and there's a lot of interest in finding a path forward to making something happen, meaning improving service through deploying more infrastructure here in town. It's not a simple process, but what we have found, that there is opportunity, and if we put together a request for proposals process that can lead to a lease, we have prospects for attracting service that can offer best value to the town financially, which won't be a large number, but it could be meaningful in terms of the lease payments. But I think critically, by partnering, we have, as a town, the opportunity to put infrastructure where it's needed in such a way that we can actually improve service. What we have learned along the way, to get to the point of issuing an RFP, that we do have two zoning, or excuse me, two warrant article considerations for town meeting going forward. The first, the zoning amendment that I described earlier, that would allow for locating towers on town land, and the second would be a warrant article that would allow, but not require, the town to enter into a lease allowing for the deployment of cell infrastructure, likely a tower or monopole, and while we haven't really finalized exactly where that would be, we're certainly focused on the Bear Cove Park area, town-owned lands in that general facility. We would be targeting releasing an RFP in the June, July, maybe early August timeframe to correspond with the fact that a zoning article, while passed by town meeting, would still require the approval of the Attorney General, which has a process on its own, but once we receive that approval and there's certainty on that zoning, we'll be taking some zoning risk off the table and make any kind of RFP that the town might issue that much more attractive. And the last I'd like to mention is while this is all going on in terms of longer-term actions, we are seeing some things happening, maybe a bit smaller, but also a bit more quickly. The town has been in conversations with AT&amp;T, and they're preparing to come forward to seek variances in special permits for four small cell sites, two on Fort Hill Street that are not installed, but there are also two others that they're looking at, one on Whiting Street and one at the intersection of Lincoln Street and 3A. Those two are proposed to be located in the public way and have a MassDOT license, but because they're not a state entity, they have to go through our town process. The interesting thing to me about all that is that AT&amp;T is willing to go forward, seeking that work now on an at-risk basis, expecting that there'll be support for the zoning change at town meeting that would make things much easier going forward. And that reflects, I think, a certain amount of confidence in the town, and I think the effort that's been invested in Town Hall as well as outside over the past few months. So I think I'll leave it at that. Certainly welcome any questions. We have representatives from a community group that's been very active, very vocal. Bill and I have had the opportunity to meet with as well.
Excellent, thank you, Art. Yes, Bill, you've taken the lead on this. Do you want to add anything?
Yeah, a couple of things, thank you. So I did speak with a Verizon executive, works in the Real Estate Department, right before the holidays, and as Art indicated, he did confirm they are going to move forward with some form of cell towers on top of the Green Street property. They're very confident that that will address some of the coverage issues in North Hingham, the downtown area, that part of town, and will also help the grid town-wide. So my next conversation with this gentleman was, well, what can we do to help you get this done faster? And I emphasize that we are, the Board is very willing and able to help move this along. I emphasize that we have Art, Tom, Emily Wentworth all standing by to assist, and I also emphasize that we have worked with AT&amp;T to address problems now and summarize those, and we will do that for all of the carriers in town to try to remedy the problem earlier. So I do feel like the town has offered a lot of assistance to the carriers. Ultimately, the carrier's got to kind of work with us and take us up on some of these offers, but my last conversation with Verizon was a very positive one, and I think things are trending in the right direction. The town warrant articles will help as well, so moving along. I know people are discouraged. I wish we could move this faster, but we are moving as fast as we can and trying to help where we can as quickly as we can.
Excellent, thank you, Bill, for all your efforts. What can citizens do? Should they, are there public hearings being held by the Planning Board that they should attend in advance, obviously, of town meeting?
That's certainly underway now. In talking with Emily and Mike, it was a topic of discussion at the Planning Board meeting last night.
Last night, okay. Okay, excellent. Joe?
Yeah, Art, thank you. Thanks for the work. I do have a couple of questions. You've mentioned a couple of times the small cell sites. What is that?
Small cell infrastructure looks different and functions differently from what I think most of us picture when we typically think of infrastructure to support cell service, you know, the large towers or the monopoles with large antenna arrays that are hanging off of them. A small cell installation is what you might describe as a small antenna with the control equipment often attached to or hung on a utility pole that provides similar capabilities, supports voice and supports data transmission, but they have a shorter range, and they're typically deployed in areas to either fill gaps or to add extra capacity where there's extra demand. So you can think of them as kind of complementary, but Hingham ultimately will need both types of installations long-term to really address the challenge we have.
The options that you talked about that are being considered, the zoning amendments or other plans, to what extent would they involve any outflow of revenue from the town?
For the town to...
In other words, is this a budget item?
This is not a budget item. We don't envision any expenditures on the part of the town. If we are a partner, we would be looking to offer town-owned facilities, but we would expect to get some kind of financial compensation as part of the deal.
And so typically, cell towers are done either by the carriers or, most of the time, by independents who then lease them out to the carriers. Have we been in discussions with any of the independents who would be constructing the towers?
Yes, we have.
That's great. And just to reemphasize a point that I think should be clear is, what's being proposed would involve a special permit process where a butter neighbor concerns are voiced, there's an opportunity to voice them, an opportunity to consider them, and so to the extent that folks are concerned about something coming up in their neighborhood that could be disruptive, they will have the chance to have some input before any approvals are granted.
Absolutely.
So this is not like forcing them down into a neighborhood without neighborhood consent.
Absolutely, by no means.
Great, that's it, thank you.
Excellent.
Can I add one other point, too? In terms of the town meeting warrant articles going forward, I have talked to some carrier representatives about them, and they're very interested in how that develops and what possibly could come about as a result of these warrant articles. So I think we're going to have a lot of interest in carriers once we get through town meeting and move along with the RFP process, so I think that was a good development as well.
Great.
Excellent, thank you. Mark, or Beth, do you want to add anything? Sure, come on up.
Thank you. I'm Beth Rice. Thank you very much, Art, for that informative update, and for all of you for continuing to involve us and be very transparent as the spokesperson for our little Citizens Committee. We're really, we just like to help, not sure how we can, and would love an answer to that, and we have just a few small questions as follow-up, if that's appropriate. Wondering if there's any update at all or any additional information, Art, or anyone on the New North steeple permit?
I'm not aware of any new information. I recall from...
Was any update on that? No.
I recall from past conversations that the facility's available, the permit's open, but there isn't, as far as we know, there isn't carrier interest in actually taking advantage of it.
Okay.
If I could, I did speak with the Verizon representative about the New North location. He indicated to me that they did not think that steeple was tall enough for their purposes, but he said that was just, they haven't closed the door on it, but he did mention, I did bring that up in conversation.
Oh, thank you. And then, do we know whether there was AT&amp;T interest in the Congregational Church steeple? Was that discussed or at some point? No.
I'm not aware of it.
Not aware? Okay. Is there a specific follow-up meeting planned with Verizon based on the last conversation that was had with them? Or is it just, we're wondering what the exact next steps are on that?
I think we haven't discussed a specific need for a follow-up conversation. I think that the ball's reeling the town's court. I mean, we have to work through the town meeting process and demonstrate that we've got the capacity to take a next step.
I understand, so that's the next step. We'll get to that, and then maybe there are some follow-ups with the carrier.
I mean, I anticipate that we will definitely meet again with the Verizon team we've been speaking with in the spring before town meeting to let them know the ins and outs of the article. Conversation I had with the representative did not include the engineers that we've been talking to, but I do anticipate that we'll probably meet with them again and let them know, now that the article, once it gets through the Planning Board approval and it gets on the warrant, we'll talk to them more about, hey, this is what this means of the possibility for your service.
Great, thank you. And I think just in closing, we were just wondering, what can we do to help now or at any point? I think we could mobilize some community action if that would be helpful with the carriers, to raise the issue over time, or to, I think there's a, we would be willing to help with that, or if there's any engagement around raising awareness of the issue to help to possibly counter any butter objection that might come up, or we'd just like to know if there's anything now or later that we could do to help. We're here to help, and that's really kind of our purpose.
I would think that as part of the process for the zoning amendments, to show up and have community support to make sure that that happens.
Great.
And I think just the general public awareness, we're aware, we get comments from members of the public demanding better cell service, and keeping it in the forefront of everyone's mind so that the issue does not languish, that we continue moving forward.
Yeah, great, and if there's anything we can do to raise awareness of that, we're encouraged by tonight's report and the ongoing progress, and would love to assist in any way, and if, you know, raising community awareness that there is work underway and that as things happen like the zoning change, that's all about solving this problem.
Exactly.
And anything that we can do to communicate that positive news and try to continue to get progress happening would be great, and we would welcome that.
Excellent, well, thank you, Beth, and thank you to the committee for all of your work.
Is there anything else?
Come on up, Mark, just so people at home can hear you.
Pardon me if my voice seemed to have lasted. Mark Cullings, 40, actually. Just the zoning article, which I think is terrifically important. Is this a best practices origin? Have we talked with other communities or the carriers about the language in it? When the original bylaw was written, I was frankly very impressed with how broad it was, but it clearly has come up short in current discussions, and I'm just wondering, I don't want to miss anything. I don't want to go through all of the process with the Planning Board and go into town meeting, getting something passed that we have to revisit.
If I can just rephrase, so Art, do we know if what's being proposed is modeled after other town bylaws?
I'm not aware of us taking that approach. I think what we've identified thus far are some very basic gaps that we're trying to fill, meaning if we don't allow this use and require carriers or infrastructure providers to pursue variances, we're just creating a lot of permitting risk that would deter folks from stepping forward.
And I would add, too, we haven't run the specific article by them, obviously. You know, we rely on Emily, Susan Murphy, John Coughlin to do all the wordsmithing, but we certainly run by on what this is going to result in and the potential use there, and they are very happy with that. They think it's, I mean, I shouldn't say happy, they're very interested in it. You know, do we get more of a commitment from them? They have, we'll definitely submit an RFP. No, we didn't get that, but we got, yeah, that really interests us. That could help, we were aware of the problem in Hingham, that could help us solve the problem, which was a good development, but we haven't run the specifics of the article by them yet.
That's helpful. I'd like to go back to the Hingham Congo Church. My understanding, it is from a representative of their Board of Trustees, that they signed an agreement with AT&amp;T for engineering, and that's why I'm concerned. Earlier in this, when this whole discussion began, I got a map that was produced by a third party that indicated an existing antenna array in the Congo Church or at that address, which doesn't exist. So one of the real difficulties we've had, all of us, I think, I would suggest that maybe you'll agree, is we've had a hard time finding accurate information, who's doing what where. We would love to have an individual, the name of an individual at the carriers, who's in a position of responsibility, who can actually answer questions. We've been meeting almost weekly since last fall, and it's one of the frustrating things that this is amorphous, it's a very serious issue, not just for Hingham's community, but the region, the state, the nation. I was out of town during the last storm, but they were unusual for Hingham to have the power outages, but we did, and I saw on social media any number of reports of people who were very, very concerned that they did not have cellphone coverage. Carriers seem to be happy to provide Wi-Fi service that we all pay for individually and as businesses, but when the power goes out, the Wi-Fi is not there, and the basic coverage is not there either. Public safety is huge, and... Public safety is huge and it's, I just, again, want to thank everybody here for taking this ball and really trying to move the needle in the direction of getting some help. Other communities are paying attention as well because they have similar issues. The carriers have not been terribly responsive, aside from their public relations maps that say everything's fine and we know it isn't. Thank you again.
Thank you. Well, thank you for all of your help. And just to reiterate what Joe said, whatever you can do to help get the word out that the planning board will be here, will be holding hearings on these zoning amendments and then of course be sure to be at town meeting.
Sure, come on up.
Julie Donovan, 18 Malcolm. I just want to make sure, Bill, I understand the Green Street, Verizon owns that, so they've got their own swim lane, they can make their changes, they don't need permit processing, is that right? So that continues on?
That's not right.
No.
They still need zoning approval.
Does that have to wait till town meeting?
No.
No, that will go through the zoning board permitting process.
So that one happens a little quicker?
Yes.
Yes.
Awesome, it sounds like.
So it happens a little quicker and the other thing is too, they're not in historic district-
Okay.
-which, which means they don't have to go to the HCC as Justin would know, they're going to, they file the permit with the zoning board, so it would make it a little quicker. And in my last conversation with the Verizon representative, I said, hey, we're standing by to help you out, we're ready to go, give me, it's my cellphone number-
So then that's the one, yeah.
-my cellphone number, my email, let me know how we can help you move this along. So, but yeah, it's, it still goes through the zoning process there. As Joe will tell you, having been the chair of the zoning board, there'll be public hearings, a butter's can come to here and discuss it, ask questions, but they don't need to go through the town meeting process to put these up.
And the ball's in their court to tell us, they said in 2024, but we would love to know, is it in February or is it in October?
I asked that, obviously. I hope it's early '24, you said the answer was in '24.
All right, we'll keep the pressure on.
We will.
Thank you for that.
We'll tell them that we'll throw a party if it's done.
We'll do anything. And then you mentioned, I think it was Art who mentioned, it's AT&amp;T pursuing these small cell towers? Can we mention that to Verizon to say, okay, just so-
I've mentioned it probably about six or seven times. In email and in our meetings.
Because the monotower, we all love, like, there's, that's a long tail, there's a process, it'd be thoughtful and, you know.
Right.
In the meantime, if we get Green Street and then the carriers can put up these small cell towers, that's their, that will help with the sense of urgency. Yeah?
Yes.
Okay. All right, well, thank you for clarifying that.
Yeah.
Thanks for everybody.
Thank you.
If I could add one thing, I, that's all I've been stated, but I do appreciate the work of your group, Mark, and I've gone to a couple of your meetings and very much appreciate the support and also the positive nature in which you're supporting these efforts. It's very much appreciated by us, so thank you for that. You have a great group and wonderful residents trying to do a good thing. Thank you.
I would just add, it's not, it's, public safety is an important aspect, but it's also important for business. I'm sure, Mark, you're, the businesses who are at the farmer's market, they are dependent on cell service to run credit cards. And so, and many merchants use that. So it's something that will promote business in town, public safety in town, and I think general residential enjoyment of our town, so we're aware of that.
Yes.
Yep.
Yes, excellent, thank you. Any questions or comments from members of the public? Okay, well, thank you, Art, thank you everyone for the update.
Good to see you, bye, thank you.
We will keep this moving. Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, to consider acceleration of debt for Community Preservation Act projects. Julie?
Good, how are you?
Good, good, happy new year.
Happy new year.
So I'm Julie Straley, 231 Lovett Street, I'm chair of the Community Preservation Committee, and I'm here to discuss with you tonight CPC's interest in making a larger debt payment as part of its recommendation to annual town meeting this year. So just to recap, each year the CPC selects projects and grant amounts to recommend to town meeting, and we are meeting tomorrow evening to take the vote this year for the recommendations. And so we work with a budget from funding sources, which consist of a one and a half percent surcharge on residential and business tax bills, plus a distribution from the Commonwealth's Community Preservation Trust Fund. So we're, we have a budget this year to recommend to town meeting of $1.9 million. And that is due to the surcharge plus funds from the trust fund, but we also have some extra sources, which I'll detail more when we meet in a couple of weeks to go over the recommendations, but the budget is $1.9 million. But this year we do have a surplus at the end of the process of allocating. We have one project for the Hingham Community Playground rebuild. And then also we have to set aside 10% of our annual revenue for each of three categories, historic, open space, and community housing. And since we didn't have applications or payments this year for historic or community housing, we have to set aside funds for those categories. And then finally, we have our minimum debt payment we have to make for the purchase of the Lehner property, which we purchased in 2016, which is the 49-plus acres of land off South Pleasant Street. And so I think in your packet you have the debt schedule for, we have a minimum payment for this year, but the CPC is interested in increasing that amount so that we would be... So the amounts that I have in our budget is a little slightly different than your budget schedule because we got a new updated debt schedule that had a different interest rate, but basically we would be interested in paying down $446,801 instead of the minimum, which was on your debt schedule, it's $218,000. So as you are the authors, officers authorized in matters concerning borrowing, I'm here to discuss the issue with you tonight. So CPC members are in favor of taking this action because down the road it would mean a smaller principal amount payment, some modest savings on the interest, and perhaps this is the last opportunity to make a higher debt payment before this short-term borrowing that the Lehner property as it now would be maybe going out to long-term debt, so we wouldn't be able to do this. So.
All right, excellent, thank you. So the CPC is planning on voting tomorrow?
Yes.
But you've discussed it as a great-
Yes, we talked about it a couple of times over the fall because during the application process, because we knew we only had one application this year that, and that so that we would probably have a surplus, and so we talked about the concept. And, you know, I don't know exactly how everyone's going to vote tomorrow night, but the general consensus was putting the money, any extra money to work this year on paying down more of that.
Yes, I, I think it makes sense. Can you just review again the amounts that will be reserved for next year? The 10% for, well, community housing, affordable housing, referring it to as community housing? And 10% for, there's another 10%?
For historic, the historic category.
Okay.
So the Community Preservation Act statute has three main categories that the town has to spend money on each year. So one of them is open, open space and a subset of that is recreation.
Yep.
So that, the, that amount is covered every year right now by the payment for the Lehner property purchase. So the other two categories though, we didn't have applications for this year. The dollar amount that we would set aside for each of them is $185,783. And to get that, that's the minimum 10%, and that's based on the combination of our surcharge from the taxes in Hingham plus the state match that we got from the CPA trust fund. So that total was $1.85 million, and so 10% of that is 185, 783. So they'll be rolled forward next year. So on top of the minimum 10% that we have to pay for those categories next year, we will also have an extra $185,000 for each of those categories.
Okay.
So we're setting aside that money for next year.
Great.
Other things that are part of our budget for this year is that we have an administrative fund that we would request, we're going to vote tomorrow, but the request would be $40,000 to pay our legal fees, to pay dues to the Community Preservation Coalition, and then to get some administrative help from town hall.
Excellent. Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
Yep.
Joe, do you have any questions?
Do, I do, and I have some comments. First, I think the CPC group is incredible in terms of their commitment to the town. Their meetings as a rule are usually the most fun of all the town committees, so it's really great. The question I have is, we're talking about essentially rolling over the money to next year. Is there a, a limit to the rollovers? So in other words, if we don't spend X amount of dollars on historic, it's going to get rolled to next year.
Yep.
Is there an end to that rolling process or can it keep happening?
It can keep happening.
Okay.
There's no limit.
It's not like tax situations where you can carry forward or carry back for a certain period of time and then it's over.
No.
And most importantly, we are satisfying the minimum requirements associated with the statute so that we're not in violation there.
Correct.
And with, particularly with respect to affordable housing, I just want to make sure that we've considered any applications that have come in and that they are being either actively looked at or there are none and there's, there's nothing to look at.
We did not receive any applications within the application window for housing this year.
Right.
So we, I'll go into more detail when we meet in a couple of weeks-
Sure.
...but there is part of the Community Preservation article this year, a vote to allocate the proceeds from the sales of a number of properties that the Hingham Affordable Housing Trust have refurbished a number of properties and they're selling them. And so they will realize proceeds from those sales. And the vote that the CPC would take and send to town meeting is to allow the Affordable Housing Trust to just put that, those proceeds back into their opportunity fund so that they can use that to purchase other properties. So that's a good thing for them for this year, and then of course they can apply for more funding next year.
One more question, I'm not sure if it's for you or for Michelle, is what is the dollar impact in terms of the savings on cost, on interest expense by paying down the debt that's being proposed?
Sure, it's a little hard to estimate at this point because all of our debt is in, excuse me, short-term bands, so we won't actually know the interest rate until we sell those notes next month, but we're estimating three and a half percent right now. So depending on how we structure the remaining principal, it saves between like $45,000 and $85,000 in interest.
So basically, there's an outflow, but actually there's an inflow coming in to offset to some extent.
Yes, and then also the principal payments would be, future principal payments would be a little bit lower. And some of the CPC projects, the projects coming in are smaller dollar amounts, some of them are much larger, but, you know, that could make a difference for future projects.
Great, no other questions, thank you.
Great, Bill?
I can't think of a time in recent memory where there's only been one CPC application.
I know.
It's amazing, given the amount that you had last year and the year before that.
I know.
Yeah, that's great. And it's, but the one you've got is a great one, so that's, it's good to hear that. I think it's a perfect time to pay down some of the debt on Lehner project and I think I'd be very supportive of the committed act, and so thank you, Julie, for your leadership, and thank you to the committee.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments from members of the public? Okay, excellent. So we're not actually taking a vote, okay, but I think you have our full support. Thank you for your leadership, I think this, and thank you for this creative idea. I think this is money well spent and really good timing, so thank you.
Great, thank you, and I'll see you in a couple of weeks to go through in more detail.
Very good.
Thanks, Julie.
All right, thanks, Julie.
Liz?
Yes.
Regarding your next item?
Yes.
I understand we may have a sick child at home.
Yes, I know, I'm, I know, I'm on it, I'm on it.
I didn't know if you knew.
So, next, okay, next on the agenda is FY25 departmental budget requests, and we are going to have Jennifer Young from Elder Services come up first. I was not going to embarrass her daughter at the meeting, but...
Are we all ready to start?
Yes.
Okay, welcome to the new process here. Good evening and thank you for having me here tonight, and thank you for taking me early, I appreciate that. I'm Jennifer Young, Director of the newly retitled Hingham Center for Active Living and the Department of Elder Services. We operate a 5,000-square-foot center for older adults to access education, transportation, volunteer opportunities, tax work-offs, support groups, special events, and much more. We provide in-person, remote, and hybrid opportunities to meet the needs and interests of people across abilities and age groups. We connect older adults and their family members to services, benefits, and our programs to help support healthy aging across the community. Next slide. So currently we have a total of four full-time positions and one part-time employee, which is supported by the municipal budget. We work with more than 60 volunteers and senior tax work-off recipients, as well as a variety of paid instructors. And we have an 11-seat Council on Aging Advisory Board. So the center's a unique department where our participants will come in in the morning and spend virtually the entire day, virtually and in person, with their friends, taking classes, socializing, and sharing a meal with others. Now, between July and November of this year, which is just the first quarter of the year, we serve 623 individuals. We welcomed 84 new members with an additional 65 just in November and December alone, so that was after I provided you the information for the slides here. We provided 375 medical rides to 40 individuals and 837 local rides to 85 seniors. We've run 110 various programs, which as you know, repeat, for a total of almost 1,800 programs just during the first quarter. So we are very busy, and as I mentioned, we work with a lot of volunteers, over 60 of them, to help us run our day-to-day tasks. And those volunteers have given us 4,072 hours, or the equivalent of almost two and a quarter of full-time employees, which has given the town a savings of almost $160,000, just about half of our budget. And we look forward to much more over the next couple of years. So our key initiatives, the department completed a community-wide needs assessment in 2022, and the report is still available on our website. We learned a lot about the community's understanding of what we do and what is wanted from us, and we've used the results of that report to build our initiatives. Initiative number one, you've heard me talk an awful lot recently about marketing, outreach, and rebranding. We have a large population of community members that still don't quite understand what we do at the center, but they should also benefit from our mission. We have recently changed our name from the Senior Center to the Center for Active Living to be more representative of the members that we service. The Council on Aging Board has a marketing subcommittee working on a rebranding campaign which will be rolled out this spring. Our second mission is to strengthen our community partnerships, which we've been working really hard on with other organizations that share a similar mission or share members with similar interests. The Senior Center Building Committee continues to do its work reviewing the draft, requests for qualifications, conducting site visits, developing program plans, and participating in the next steps of the expansion or construction project. We are in the process of revising our five-year strategic plan, developing the objectives based on feedback from stakeholders over the next couple of months, as well as the information from that needs assessment. And our final formal initiative is to increase the variety of programming opportunities that we offer, to keep both the longstanding programs and bring in new and innovative offerings to benefit the health of the community. And the next slide. So our budget request for this year, it's level service, it's for the department salaries, $368,800. It's for the department salaries, 368,896 dollars. Uh, that's for full-time staff, including myself, one outreach coordinator, an administrative assistant, and our newly created position of the program coordinator. We have two part-time staff, um, two of whom are drivers, and, um, well, it should say three part-time staff, two of whom are drivers, and one office assistant at 12 hours. And the cost of our part-time transportation coordinator is 43,923 dollars, but it's fully supported by the State Formula Grant. Um, our department expenses are 27,310 dollars, of which 16,525 are for the transportation program. And that provides services for about 125 seniors, um, that took 1,200 rides so far this year. Does anybody have questions about the budget before we move on?
Do you have any questions? No, go ahead.
All righty then. Um, so I do have a couple of additional requests that I'm proposing this year. Um, they are carrying over from the last budget for, for the fiscal year. Um, last year, I came before you pleading for the full-time program coordinator, and I'm so grateful that that position was granted, um, and we are 99% of the way there to have that position filled, so, um, but our job, our work here is still not done. Um, year after year, I, I say that, you know, we've needed more personnel since before I even came to the center, so I'm gonna continue to ask for, um, an increase in our existing office assistant hours from 12 to 20 hours a week, which would be a cost of 14,432 dollars. Um, the majority of this role does consist of customer service, and we do have, we work with a lot of volunteers who, throughout the year, you know, they take the winter off, there's medical appointments, things that come up, so it's not entirely consistent. And they are the forefront of who you work with right when you come into the center. We have some really amazing volunteers, uh, but there's also a lot of backend work that needs to along with it. And we implemented online registration and payment systems, um, which have a lot of benefits, but also adds more time and responsibility to the staff. So it would really, eh, eh, drive home that consistent customer service that we've been looking for. Um, I'm also seeking a part-time nutrition coordinator, which would, um, add an estimated cost of 30,484 dollars. Um, as most of you in the room know, and many people tuning in at home, a lot of what we do centers around food. Um, and for our seniors, a lot of the food that they eat with us is the meal that they eat with others. A lot of people are eating at home alone. Um, so nearly half of our programs provide food and coffee service, and we have a space that could function as a cafe for the Town Hall and for visitors as well. Um, so this role would be responsible for planning, ordering, delivery, inventory control, food storage, disposal, cleanliness, food safety, and serve-safe compliance. Um, I'm gonna continue to ask for these positions, because I do really feel like they'd be a huge benefit to the community. Um, and the seniors make up 34% of our population, with another 15% aged 50 to 59. Um, and as we look forward to the next 10 years, the population's gonna continue to grow, and their needs are going to grow, putting a strain on community resources. So we're the foot in the door, um, to take control of how you age and to keep Hangham a vibrant community for all.
Excellent. Well, thank you for all you do. We're excited for the Center for Active Living.
Thank you.
I love hearing about it and all of the events. It's very impressive what you've done just in the first quarter.
Thank you.
Those are some amazing numbers, so thank you. Joe?
Um, what's not in the numbers, uh, and what I hear from members, is the spirit that's, you've cultivated, uh, in, among the staff, uh, and really just in the building. Um, so thank you for that. It's, you, you don't see it here, but you feel it when you go there, and, and I, I hear it from, uh, from residents. And, uh, this is, uh, these are budgets that we need to, um, seriously look at in terms of what we can add, um, while respecting our commitments, uh, to the town in terms of, uh, what we're gonna do for raising revenue, uh, but this is a good way to spend revenue. So, so thank you.
Phil?
I was told last, that spring that the Town Meeting approved the program coordinator position. I know you said we're 99% there. Do we have an applicant in, in the pipe, in the pipeline coming on board, or is the position developed to almost 100%?
The position is developed, um, and we have an applicant that's about 99% on board.
Excellent. Great, great. Well, in addition to all the great things you put up there, I know that there's hundreds of volunteer hours that go on at the, at the center, and, um, makes it such a special place. So thank you for your leadership and all you do for our seniors.
Thank you. I appreciate the support.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hope you're feeling better.
Thanks so much.
Yeah, good luck. All right, um, Public Works. Randy, you wanna come up?
The man of the hour.
It's where he goes.
Another storm coming tonight. No rest for the weary, Randy.
It's already going.
It's not snow, though, right?
Not snow.
Too warm for that. Where are we gonna start? Public Works?
Yeah.
Public Works, yeah.
So, Public Works, our mission is, the Department of Public Works is responsible for the care and maintenance of public roadways, sidewalks, drainage systems, shade trees, parks, grounds, recreation fields, athletic fields, the town's recycling and trash transfer facility, and snow and ice control on all public and certain private roadways in Hangham. The DPW contains six divisions: engineering, fleet maintenance, highway, sewer. Um, and that's a separate budget, as you know. Transfer station, also a separate budget, which I'll be presenting, and tree and park. The organizational chart, um, there's a superintendent, assistant superintendent, um, town engineer, and an office manager. And then, under the assistant superintendent, the, uh, four supervisors, actually, yes, four supervisors, which is the fleet maintenance, highway, transfer station, and, um, tree and park. The DPW staff maintains, um, 140 miles of public roads, 100 miles of drain lines, 60 miles of sidewalks, 10,000 drainage structures, uh, 10,000-plus shade trees. Uh, we average planting is about 80. That has gone down as of late, um, due to budgetary concerns. Uh, we do about 380 to 400 removals a year, uh, and we, we do about 3,000, 3,300 prunings a year. We have 80 pieces of snow, um, snow, uh, removal equipment, um, 3,100 traffic street signs, and five sets of s, uh, lights, signal lights, 13 pump stations. Uh, the transfer station supports, uh, they take in about 8,000, and that's going up to, on an average, 9,000 vehicles a week. Uh, we do the key init, key initiatives that we have. Um, road construction program and utility coordination, uh, of course, storm response and recovery, um, which seems to happen every week. Uh, the MS4 stormwater permit compliance, uh, which gets, um, more stringent every year. DEP grant applications, um, public education and recycling regulation changes, sewer inflow and infiltration program, grounds and maintenance of public facilities, uh, transfer station fee analysis, um, which we're going to have to take seriously, because, um, the fee structure that we do have now doesn't cover the costs from what's happened through COVID and all the trans, transportation costs and fees are just rising. And we're about, hitting about 50% of the actual costs, where before, when we put this in place, it was covering the costs. And, of course, the new My Hang, Hangham app, um, for residents, which they can download, um, and then text us, um, any problems that they have, and it goes right into our system. Now we'll get into budgets, the numbers. So my, um, personal services budget, um, this year would be 3,105,322 dollars. This includes all the raises that the union, um, has negotiated. So that's covered in this number here, um, and ex, which is 4, 4.6% above last year. Um, and then expenses, there's a few here, things in the expenses that I'd like to explain is that, um, I'm asking for more money, um, especially in a couple of items. Uh, one is the maintenance of vehicles, um, due to COVID and shipping and the cost of parts and actually getting parts, um, that, that cost has risen about 30%, if not more. Um, we have trouble just getting vehicles, um, any parts for vehicles, we have to wait, and they're sitting around in, in our, uh, storage facilities. When we do get the parts, of course, they repair and they get out back on the road. Um, another thing is R and M building, it'll be going up about 10%, um, hopefully. They, the, the building is now, um, 11 years old, I believe. And there were repairs and maintenance that have to be done on a regular basis, which we didn't have in the, in the past years. Of course, the, the increase in utilities. Um, and then one thing in drainage services, and that's in our road building budget, and in this budget, it gets combined with snow. I wanna increase that, um, by about 6, 6, 7%. And basically, this is for the costs that arise with the NIPD's program or the National Elimination Program, Elimination System. Um, that's the MS4 requirements, and again, those costs are going up. We have engineers doing part of the work. The engineers' costs go up, so I'm asking for, um, another, uh, 7% there. And the total of the expenditures would be, including sc, salaries, uh, 4,992,699 dollars. And that's about it. Does she have any questions?
Joe, do you wanna start?
Um, well, it's, it's a question that you're gonna hear from us, um, not just you, but everyone on the budgets, in terms of whether or not this is consistent with the town's commitment to the taxpayers to, um, keep our expenses only increasing by 3.5%.
You want me to take that?
Sure.
So, um, what we've asked the department has to do is to present their budgets that they feel they need to op, you know, operate at their optimum level. I'll be trimming that back as necessary in my presentation for my recommended budget here in a couple of weeks. Um, so what's before you is what Randy thinks he needs in order to operate at our optimum level.
Which is less than the previous year.
The total budget is less.
Yes, right, exactly.
Thank you.
So when you went to the, uh, total personnel services of 4.6%, uh, you've got offsetting,
Expenses, yes.
Expenses that have gone down. Um, and I noticed, you know, your largest expenses are in utilities, electric and natural gas, which are costs that, uh, you can't control.
I can't control those costs.
We get that. Um, looking at your capital outlay, um, which, um...
These capital outlay items are last year's. Those aren't the new items for this year.
My question was, why is it, why is there nothing there?
So, I, I just wanted to point out that, that, that's right. The, the capital is zero, and that's why your total is coming up.
Is much less, okay.
Okay.
Than your threshold. His budget will change when it's finally presented.
Right, 'cause we, obviously, you are gonna need your, uh, capital expenditure.
I didn't mean to drop, I just wanted to...
No, 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 that's important. And, um, the point that you made to us, um, which is essentially, don't be penny-wise and pound foolish, is you got vehicles that are, are sitting there that can't be run because you're, you need some parts, you need, you need something. So, um, we are sensitive to that and, um, don't intend to, um, limit the effectiveness of, of your, of what you have, uh, just because, uh, they, they may need some repairs or some parts. So that's a really good point. Um, other than that, um, as you know, um, this board really appreciates the work of your department and of your leadership, so thank you.
Thank you.
Phil?
Um, so in terms of the, the parts issue, um, that you expressed concern about, last year's Town Meeting increased the DPW capital budget by 300,000, correct?
500.
500,000, right, which was much needed.
Oh, not for DPW, in total. I thought you meant in total.
But the DPW, the DPW capital budget was specifically increased, I believe. Um, can we use some of that money to address the parts issue?
So he buys the parts as part of his operating budget, his annual operating budget. So we would, um, individually, they're probably below the cost of the threshold for capital, and they wouldn't have been approved specifically by capital outlay.
Okay.
So that's why we do it that way, but, uh, yeah, I don't know.
As far as capital outlay goes, you, you have to understand that I'm having a lot of problems just getting vehicles.
Yeah.
The supply is not out there. Right now, I'm still waiting on what you see here, and, uh, it's still eight or nine months out.
So the issue with the supply, not necessarily the financial resources to buy the, buy the vehicles?
Not this year.
Right, well, yeah, right, because we...
And the cost of these vehicles is going up incredibly.
Yeah.
30, 40% in some cases. I mean, it's, it's hard, and all these automobile dealers are selling, they can make more money out there selling it privately than giving us, uh, the, the state contract.
Yeah.
I mean, I've had some, some of these suppliers have, they've ordered like 400 vehicles and gotten 15. And he's wondering what he's gonna do for all these public entities. But there's a, there's a real problem out there.
And, and especially with, I know you do a great job buying vehicles that are multi-use, right? Like you use vehicles that can be used at the transportation, they can be used in snow plowing operations, um, so the vehicles you buy are, are obviously expensive, but they serve multiple purposes in helping you accomplish your mission. Um, so they're much needed, so we'll have to see what we can do to help you with that.
One note on the capital outlay budget, if you don't mind? So the Capital Outlay Committee, I think, seeing the amount of vehicles that had been deferred for DPW in the past, did prioritize extra funding for DPW in the 24 budget. But every year, capital outlay, the process kind of starts from scratch, so it doesn't mean that Randy's 25 capital budget will go up from there. All the departments kind of start at zero again, and come in with their requests, and a different allocation will be presented this year. So it's kind of a one-time influx to catch up on some of these vehicles, but that was for 24.
And my, my other question, I've got, uh, we hired three new DPW employees recently, was that right, Tom?
Yes.
Which is great. It's fantastic.
One started today, it's a matter of fact.
Oh, excellent, excellent. One of the things I mentioned to Tom was, a couple of residents, at least two have spoken to me, I think I spoke to you about it, about me possibly applying, and they mentioned to me that the cost of a CDL is a bit of a barrier for them, and it could be $3,500, $4,000 to get a CDL. I mentioned to Tom, and I wanted to mention it to you tonight, if we could implement a program similar to what the police department does, or the fire department was, would we pay for them to get that training, and then we obligate them contractually for, I don't know, a year, 18 months, to get back to the town? If they were to leave before that, they could pay their CDL back. Um, but if they don't, then we would cover it. As, and the only reason why I mention it is, the... But if they don't, then we would cover it as, and the only reason why I mention it is the residents who expressed interest didn't mention that to me, like, well, it's a lot of money to go into that job.
So we are, we have looked at that and we are planning to implement that. We have to go through the union and whatnot. I've also looked into and been on, I don't know, I don't know what you call it now, on seminars on the, on the computer. Other towns, they have actually implemented programs and they get a trainer, which goes through a federal program. And then they have to have the program all written out. They get, all the applicants or employees have to have X amount of hours of training, everything has to be documented. And then if they satisfy the course requirements, then they're able to take that and go and get their CDL.
Great.
So we're looking into it, it's in the infant stages, but we'd like to do it all in house and save, save money that way.
Great, excellent, thank you for that.
And just to let the public know that while Randy's right, we are finalizing the formal program, if someone applies right now, where we will, and they don't have a CDL, the three that we've just hired actually had CDLs.
I remember telling you that.
It's just funny. But if someone applies right now and wants the job and doesn't have a CDL, we will cover that expense starting right now. And, and then, like you say, we'll just have an agreement with them that if they leave within a couple of years, we'd ask them to pay that cost back.
Great. Well, thank you for your leadership, Randy, I appreciate all you do and you do a great job running the department, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Randy. All right, you want to move on to sewer?
Sewer? So the sewer division maintains about thirty miles of sewer pipe and thirteen pump stations in Hingham and provides sewer service to customers in two districts. There's about approximately twenty-five hundred, hundred residents or businesses in the North Sewer District treated by, and that's treated by the MWRA. And that's basically the downtown section of Hingham. And the other one is, it's about approximately eight, hundred and eighty residents and or businesses in the Wheriver Sewer District, and that's treated by Hall. There is a definitive district there. And just to, there's, there's only a certain amount of bedrooms or capacity that we can give out to the town hall and it's all in an agreement. And we're just about nearing that now. That's just, that's just a note. The sewer department has a three-member electric sewer commission and they oversee the policies and the budget of the sewer department and sets the customer rates. The sewer budget operates as a special revenue fund where the sewer rates cover sewer expenditures each year. Expenditure summary.
You could jump to the table.
Yeah, yeah, I didn't like that. So. I'm interviewing for an open position tomorrow, but full-time salaries in personal services is a total of four hundred fifty-six thousand, nine hundred and ninety-five dollars. That, again, these are union positions and it's all covered under the union contract. One of the big things in this budget that I want, I want to increase by is the R and M buildings. It's, I'm proposing a fifty-eight percent increase. As of now, in this year's budget, I'm already at seventy-five percent of last year's ask. And I don't see that going down. All these stations and are getting old and we have to replace a lot of equipment. And we're doing that slowly and a little bit at a time, but we're getting there. So that's, if you note that, that's, that's one of the big increases. The other thing is in, in the other section of the budget, there's several that basically I control. One is that I'm asking for thirty-five percent increase in architectural and engineering services. We usually go out for three-year contract on that. And then they're at the commission's disposal and our disposal if we need them. And those costs are going up quite a bit, so I'm asking for thirty-five percent more. The other one in this budget is utility sewer, that's the MWRA assessment for the year. And the other one is the intermunicipal agreement with the town hall, and that's the hall assessment. So just to clarify that for your own knowledge.
Those are staying static?
Those are saying.
Those aren't changing?
Those aren't changing.
Okay.
It's because I over-assessed last year and there's more definitive information this year and I don't have to increase the rates.
Okay.
Or the, the assessment, so I can't promise next year. So the total assessment or requests are three million, seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand, six hundred and ninety-four dollars. Any questions on sewer?
In terms of the maintenance, I know we've talked about this before for the, the stations. Is there a capital plan that this aligns with, that this budget aligns with?
Yes. There is a capital plan, we just basically outfitted Broadcove Station. Though we basically refurbished the whole thing and you, the board was good enough to approve a pump that, that satisfied. Now we have three pumps, we only had two before, and that has been installed and in service. We've replaced the generator and we've tried to make it more efficient with VFDs and the lighting has been replaced, so we try to do this station by station. Unfortunately, sometimes the need of another station comes before it and I might have to switch the capital project around a little bit, the monies, but it will always go into the next program, next capital program, so.
Okay, thank you. Joe?
I'm not sure if this is a question for you or over here. Am I correct that this, this is essentially an enterprise fund? That there is no impact to our budget, if you will, it's totally self-funded?
It's actually, I think revolving, right?
It's a special revenue fund, but it operates the same, it's self-supported.
Conceptually, so increased costs, decreased costs have no impact on the municipal budget?
That's exactly right, fully, fully paid for by ratepayers.
Yep, no other questions, thanks.
Bill?
No questions.
Okay, excellent, thank you. Move on to transfer station?
Transfer station.
Are we allowed to call it the dump or do we?
Depends who you talk to. The DPW operates the town recycling area and trash transfer facility, which is located on Samurai Road off of Hobart Street. The facility is open to residents only and certain small businesses with proper permits between the hours of seven AM and four PM. Thursday through Sunday excluding holidays. The facility, again, the facility sees about eight to nine thousand people in trips per week. And basically, we do all the recycling. And I'll, I'll get into that later and all the trash and yard waste areas. I'll go right to the personal services. That is six hundred and ninety-nine thousand, one hundred and ninety-eight, and that's a two, two and a half percent decrease from last year. And the reason for this is that two of our longtime employees, the, the transfer station supervisor has retired and so hasn't the transfer station foreman. And we have new people in place as we speak. So that's down by two and a half percent. Again, R and M buildings, that is going, I'm proposing that to go up by twenty-five percent. The expenses for the building and, and the equipment up there, that keeps increasing. So I'm asking for that and another twenty-five percent in R and M equipment. We are replacing our compactors and whatnot for recycling and trash on a program, but we do have to have them come in and maintain on a regular basis. And they do break down since they're about twenty, twenty-three years old. That's the, most of it's the original equipment up there, which is about twenty, twenty-three years old. Trash removal services is going up by five, about six percent, that's all per contract with CMASC Covanta. And the recycling cost, that's, I am going up by thirty-six percent. And this, these two in particular, there's a lot of shipping and handling and hauling and the hauling costs are doubling. I mean, it used to be two hundred and fifty dollars a haul to CMASS, now we're, we're, it's four hundred to six hundred dollars, depending on how long they have to wait in line to dump the material. And it's same thing with the recycling hauling. We didn't have to pay for it before or it was like a hundred dollars and now it's like, it's, it's, it's either doubled in summonances or even more. And we're paying for all our recyclables, unfortunately, because of the markets. So as far as the expenses. That's one million, three hundred and four thousand, six hundred and forty-one dollars. And the total, total would be two million, three thousand, eight hundred and thirty-nine. And that's about a one percent, one point eight percent increase. I know this is a good subject for everybody. Any questions?
Any questions?
I, I have two. In years past, there has been discussions about whether or not there should be composting at the transfer station. I don't know where those discussions have gone, if there's any activity or if you're already doing it or you're not doing it, I just don't know.
So this, this composting, there's two types of composting. There's one, we do have a composting area, which, which incorporates all the yard wastes.
Right.
Leaves, grass, and then logs. The problem with composting at the transfer station is it's on such a small footprint, we can't do it. And we're, we're relying, I mean, we're, we're offering so many services up there because in some cases we have to and the other, other instances, we just do it because it's right, we think it's right. So every portion of that transfer station, and I know you've been there, has some type of container or there's, 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 there's something that we're dealing with everywhere. So we really don't have the space to compost food waste, at least at that facility. We do offer composting bins at a cut rate. We get money from the RDP grant and we buy composting bins and we buy them for about seventy, seventy-five dollars a bin and we sell it for, I think, twenty-five dollars. So that grant does supplement that and we, we've sold seventy bins so far. So we do have them in stock right now, if anyone's interested, come on down and we'll, we'll happen to sell you one. And there are, and there are videos online tells you all about them. And on the town website.
My next question, you mentioned grants. Are there grants and have, has the town looked at grant opportunities to support recycling? Because I know the costs have gone up, but there is a federal effort to make sure that, you know, recycling programs continue and I don't know to what extent funds are available or if we've explored that opportunity.
So I, I apply every year and it's called the Recycling Dividend Program. And it, the, the DEP, they come out with certain criteria that we have to meet as a, as a facility at all. And for each individual category, we get a set of points and each point is worth X amount of dollars. And we have to spend that on the facility, either increasing our program or you can actually pay for household hazardous waste days, things of that. But we do get, we do, I do apply every year and there are certain requirements that go with that. And we do get anywhere from twelve thousand to sixteen thousand dollars a year, which we do, that's what we do, we buy the composting bins. We're in the process of getting a second baler up and running to isolate the certain commodities that have a, a better market value and to get a better revenue stream in. It's just been a long time coming and getting that done. All that has been paid through the RDP program, which is a grant program.
Thank you, no other questions.
Bill?
This morning, when I was getting coffee, I bumped into a friend of mine and he started talking about the town with me. And he said to me, you know what I really love about the town? And I was hoping he was going to say the select board, but he didn't. He said the transfer station, conversation I had this morning. And he said, you know, I love going up there, I can, I can recycle, I can drop things at the swap shop or get things to swap shop, I can bring my leaves up there. The DPW always has mulch out, you know, so you can use that for your gardening. A lot of people may not know it, but up beyond the leaves, you have sand and salt available for residents as well. So, so many great things are going on there, as you said, every corner of that transfer station is used for either recycling benefits or the benefit of residents. And I, I know that Steven Messenger's retirement was a big loss to the town, just a great guy and a great, you know, a great town employee for so many years. But some great things go on up there and I'm very appreciative of everybody's efforts, who work up there. I think it's a great, it's great that, see so many great things happening at once.
I'm glad.
I use it all the time.
Yes, thank you, Randy, for that. I mean, I think we need to continue the conversation about the recycling costs and what we can do there. Because that obviously is going up quite considerably. And maybe Cleaner Green or Hingham can help us evaluate that fee structure and just think creatively about what else to do that. Okay. Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, you're off the hook.
Well said.
You're done, yeah.
Now you've got to deal with the weather.
I know, yes, yeah, be, be safe. All right, animal control? I didn't make this list, but you're last, I don't know. You made somebody upset over here.
I had to buy him lunch, Steve, that's, that's all.
We used to do this, I think we used to alternate with advisory sometimes and sometimes it would be us first.
Good evening.
Excellent, yes, welcome.
Animal Control Officer Badger is sick today, she did offer to come on a Zoom, but I'd like to warn her that she needs her to rest, so I will do my best to fill in and not mess her budget up. Animal Control Officer is a one-woman show, it's Officer Leslie Badger. And she's responsible for any injured, sick, rabid or deceased animals in the town of Hingham and enforcing any animal-related state and town laws. She responds to all animal-related calls for service, she educates the public on various issues, we've talked about dog leashing in the past, coyotes. She manages dog licensing, she conducts inspections of facilities. One issue she mentioned that's kind of going on across the sub-shore is a lot of animals were adopted during COVID and now people are finding they're going back to work and they can't care for the animals, so there's a lot of abandonment of animals. Especially in towns that are more affluent like Hingham. like Hingham, Norwell, Cohasset, just because people are hoping they'll get a good home. So these are some of the different issues she deals with. She is, if you weren't aware, she is a full-time police officer. She attended the part-time academy and then the bridge academy. So in addition to all her animal control duties, she does do all the training that our police officers do. She helps with, you know, if we had a large-scale incident like the Apple Store or something like that, she might come up and assist with that. She works the Fourth of July, so she, she does a lot of things for us. Some of her metrics, she had 273 calls for service last year. She had four citations, 25 quarantines, 63 loose dogs, 14 barn inspections, and eight kennel inspections. That's consistent with the previous years. Some of her key initiatives are continuing to promote dog licensing. As mentioned earlier, with more dogs being adopted. Continuing to monitor the programs, including the off-leash program in Bear Cove and coyotes. She's going to work on more of a social media presence, which I think would be helpful. And just continuing to offer different educational meetings with the help of other local groups to educate the public. There's no organizational chart, but she responds, reports to me on the organizational chart. This is a pretty straightforward budget. The increase in salary is due to a step raise. And increasing longevity is due to a personnel bylaw due to her time on. The part-time, she doesn't have a part-time person, but those, those funds are sometimes used. Like a special officer can fill in for her and, and cover for her if, you know, she's on vacation or out for a period of time. So those funds are used for that. And then her expenses just remain the same. They include vehicle expenses, office supplies, animal disposal, kennels, things, things like that. But those are, no change in those for the year. Questions?
Excellent. Do you have any questions, Joe?
Well, you know, it's no fun, because I would like to ask Leslie the, the tough ones. But just a, a question that I've, I've seen both with fire and police, there's a lot of in-town cooperation. To what extent does that happen at her, in this department?
All the time. Even today, you know, she was, she was out with illness. So the animal control officer from Rockland covered for her. And she does vice versa with all the, the surrounding towns, Waymouth, Norwell, everybody that touches Cohasset. So they work very, very well together. There's, there's always someone covering if she's not in or in another town. There's always someone available. That's the nice thing.
So please convey to her the, the select board's support for her, her activities and a great appreciation.
Absolutely.
Yes, she does a great job. Bill?
Yeah, Leslie is definitely one of our most popular employees in the entire town. She is often.
Including everyone in this room.
Often referenced on social media, Leslie Badger, please help.
She'll know what to do.
She does a great job.
Yes.
I will certainly pass that along. I was nervous coming up here, because she is, she's the most, probably one of the most popular.
She is a celebrity.
Boy in the town.
Yes, please, thank you to Leslie Badger. I don't have any questions on the budget.
I will note, Ryan, that Leslie usually has pictures of fuzzy animals.
Yes. As I said, it's more fun.
All right, do you want to do Police Department or let Ken come up?
Oh, we'll do Police since I'm up here. Ken can hang out and just. I'm going to bring Deputy Chief Petiti up and give him a little attention.
Okay, excellent.
Let Deputy Chief O'Shea off the hook here.
Thank you, Deputy Chief O'Shea.
Well, thanks for having us tonight. So this is just our core values of integrity, service, excellence, and leadership. Ensure that our personnel and professional behavior reflect our highest traditions of excellence. And you can read a little bit more about each of our core values on this, on the screen. I won't read each of them. Our organizational chart is, is pretty straightforward. I will get into this a little more when we get to the Personnel section further up in the presentation. On our benchmarks and metrics, our calls for service continue to increase. We're up this year to 28,121 calls for a calendar year of 23. We find that calls are taking a lot longer to resolve now due to them being mental health-related, fraud investigations, domestic violence, missing endangered people, and just OUIs are taking up a lot of time. One, one that I'll highlight is one that was recently down by the old police station where there was a crash. The person fled. We had canines out, we had a drone unit up. The drone actually located the person. They have infrared, located the person face down in the woods and probably saved their life because they were nowhere, they weren't really near the original crash where they were looking for, for him. But it was several hours where we had a number of officers tied up at that. So we're seeing, continuing to see calls for service taking a lot longer to, to resolve. So. So our statistics remain fairly consistent with previous years. I had 112 arrests last year, 238 criminal complaint applications. The officers wrote a total of 1,844 incident reports. Issued a total of 4,273 citations. Responded to 356 motor vehicle crash, crashes, and issued 206 parking tickets. For our personnel, we have 53 full-time sworn, the chief, myself, two deputy chiefs. Deputy Chief O'Shea is in charge of administration, which oversees the SROs, detectives, community response clinician, animal control harbor master, and the accreditation process that we're currently undertaking. Deputy Chief of Operations is Deputy Chief Petiti, and he oversees the day-to-day operations and anything that involves our patrol force. We have four lieutenants, seven sergeants, 39 patrol officers. Out of those, four of them are school resource officers and three are detectives. We have three professional civilian staff. We have administrative assistant, a records administrator, and our community response clinician. We have two patrol canines and one famous comfort dog, Opry. We'll see in an upcoming slide. We have nine school crossing guards and 25 special police officers. Some of our key initiatives are to continue our community outreach. We have our citizens' police academies, both at Lemon Ponds and at the police station. We have our National Night Out that we do. We have community engagement with the Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, where they do canine demos, et cetera. We have the Coffee with a Cop that we do, usually a couple a year. We have our annual senior luncheon, which is another huge success this year that we do in conjunction with the, I was going to say Senior Center, but the Center for Active Living every year. Training, we're complying with the new training mandates that went into effect with police reform. We're trying to offer innovative new training opportunities for our employees to keep them engaged and give them opportunities that they might not have otherwise. And we're focusing on trying to get some regional training up and running with our area departments to save money to the town and also sort of give a, a different opportunities for our officers to, to attend some trainings. We have our community outreach that we do with Plymouth County Outreach. Drug dependency and overdose is what they are involved with. We have a domestic violence advocate, our mental health clinician, our community crisis response clinician. And we have a civil rights officer, which is Lieutenant John Marquitt. Brings us down to the budget. So our budget is, is up there on the screen. So our, our personnel numbers there. So we have wages full-time for our full-time employees is $4,819,333. We have our clerical, which is full-time, is $271,619. School crossing guard salaries is $111,524. Our overtime budget is $507,329. And the rest of these are contractual ones. So I won't go into each one unless anyone has an additional specific question on them. Expenses, this is a level services budget, so everything is consistent with us keeping our current level of services available to the town. We've moved a few things around within the budget. And unless there's any specific questions on the budget end of it.
Chief, can you just talk about the overtime? Do you see that staying consistent at the?
Well, we, overtime is a really hard thing to predict because you can't predict how many court cases your officers have. You can't predict how many late calls they're going to have wherever they have to hold over. You can't predict long-term disability. So for example, we have three officers out right now on long-term disability. Two of them have been out for over a year. One's been out for over six months. So these are things that are really hard to predict, that require overtime to sort of backfill their positions. Let alone things like that OUI crash that I mentioned before, which obviously we're calling in resources for that too. So the overtime number has been a challenge for us to sort of nail down and get a realistic figure. I know that we go over every year and sort of try to manage that and, and get, like I talked about before, those regional training opportunities and things like that to sort of try to manage the overtime or things that we do on our end. But it's just such a hard number to nail down because it's not predictable. It's not something that we can look at and have some formula that, that lays out like, okay, it'll be this this year.
Right, right. No, understood. And I just want to make sure we have a corrected copy of the police budget.
You do.
I just want to make sure my colleagues saw that. The computer service agreement line.
Yeah, that was a little wacky.
Has come way down, which is great work.
I mean, I'll take that money, but if you want.
But thank you. Joe, do you have any questions?
I do. Thanks for the presentation.
Of course.
So before I, I go into the questions, you began this discussion with talking about core values. And just my experience with the department is that's not just paper. You, you guys actually live it, and, and it really shows. So, so thank you for that.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
In terms of overtime, just following up on Liz, and this is a question that will also be going to the fire chief when it's his turn, is, you know, we want to make sure that there is an active plan to manage overtime. And we understand that it's not predictable. But there is an historical basis. We can look at where it's been and make assumptions about what it's likely to be in the future and make sure we're managing that we've got programs in place to, to control overtime. Because that is where departments tend to bust the budget. So, you know, I, I want to press a little harder on making sure that there are plans in place, whether it's, it's from a recruitment standpoint or in terms of, you know, managing your workflow, that we can control overtime. Because that, that's an important aspect in both of your budgets, I know.
No, it's important to us too, because we don't want to see our officers get burnt out where they're forced to other shifts and everything else. That's something we don't want to see. So we want to control overtime as much as you want to see it controlled. Recruitment is a big issue for, for not only us in Hingham, but nationwide in policing. The profession took quite a hit over the past couple of years, and we find that people do not want this job anymore. We have five openings right now. We put out 75 names. We got out of that maybe 10 to 15 people that signed saying that they would take the job. And out of that, we have one to two viable candidates. So that's the problem that we're facing here in Hingham. It's across the region and across the country, unfortunately. So that, that's another challenge with our overtime budget, right? We have three people out long-term disability. We've got five openings coming up here. So we're cognizant of it. We don't want our officers to get forced onto other shifts. We do have minimum staffing levels that we have to maintain for the safety of the officers and the community. So we're, we're very actively trying to find ways to, to control that.
You mentioned the Coffee with a, Coffee with a Cop program. And the feedback that I've gotten is that that is superb. It, it really brings the community and the police department together in, in, in such a friendly way. You know, not confrontational, you're really sharing a cup of coffee or whatever it is. And it, it really works. So please keep that up. It's tremendously positive feedback on that.
We do. We run it at two locations, at the Senior Center and then at one of the local coffee shops also. So it's been very successful.
And then one final question, and I don't know if it's appropriate for this budget or not. Is there, do we have any items associated with moving the police department into the new public safety facility?
Not yet, no.
Because that, there obviously will be expenses associated with that.
There will be, yes. There's nothing on here yet. I think that's being handled by the Public Safety Building Committee.
But it'll, it's handled by that committee, but it's going to be in, in whose budget will that be?
Which expenses are you referring?
Talking about move, transferring the department over from Town Hall.
The actual moving expense? That's in the, that's in the budget for the building of the building?
It is. Okay, great. No other questions? Thanks.
Excellent.
No questions, and I'd ask the record to reflect. I'll be recused when we vote on this budget.
Well, thank you, Chief and Deputy Chief, for all you do. To echo Joe's comments, it's not just Coffee with a Cop, but certainly your collaboration with seniors, students, all of our residents, and all of the community building that you're doing. We really appreciate, in addition to keeping us safe. So thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, harbor master? Do you want to come up, Ken?
Ken, I'll keep your company up. Since I made you wait.
Wasn't a long wait.
I won't keep the fire chief company though.
I did learn that my presentation was somewhat of a novel, so I apologize for that. I guess I like to write, but I don't know if it's any good.
We appreciate the detail. And thank you, everybody, for using ClearGo.
I was trying to follow, follow the plot. The character development.
I don't know if the writing's any good.
Come on.
So as most of you know, the harbor master's office is a division within the police department. We focus on policing the waterways, the shorelines, and we do have five islands within town. So that's the, that's the, really the mission of the harbor master's office. Patrol-wise, we also do an administrative work too, which is permitting of the boats within town. We have about 1,300 boats that we permit for moorings. We also oversee a bunch of events that take place. We issue permits for those. We also issue permits for structures along the coastline and, and a bunch of other things administratively. There's, within the, the division, we have several different positions. I'm the harbor master. We have head assistant harbor master. Both of us are full-time police officers. We have a whole bunch of different training. We're trained as police officers, like I just mentioned, but we also are trained in water rescues, maritime law enforcement. We also do maritime firefighting and a bunch of different things associated with the maritime environment. We have part-time assistant harbor masters. Some of them are police officers, some of them are not. The ones that aren't deal more with pumpouts, where we, where they will take waste out of boats, bring it back to shore and dispose of it. They'll do mooring revenue collections and stuff like that on the water. The ones that are police officers, they've been through a police academy, obviously. They usually have a full-time job somewhere else, and then they work here part-time for the summer. Most of those employees just work the summer months. They might fill in a little bit throughout the, the winter time, but they're really just a summertime employee. And we have one full-time office clerk. Or actually, I should say part-time. It's categorized as a full-time essentially because it's over the 20 hours, but it's, it's really a part-time, part-time position. He handles a lot of the office administrative stuff, phone calls, responding to emails, and the backend, managing the revenues and making sure they get deposited into the various accounts. Organizationally, I respond, report to Deputy Chief Ryan O'Shea. And then you'll see beneath me, we have administrative assistant, head assistant harbor master. And underneath me, we have all of the assistant harbor masters. But they kind of get broken up into a couple of different categories based upon what their level of training and experience are. As I mentioned, we have some that are police officers. They're able to go out there and make vessel stops, activate blue lights, and actually do enforcement work because of their training. And then we have two other groups, some that have more training, where they can actually go out there on a patrol, and they can do search and rescue type stuff. They can respond if someone's in need of assistance, whether it be medical or if there's someone in the water and need to be rescued. So they have those capabilities. And we have some newer people, which might be younger. And they're the ones that really do the pumpouts and, and mooring fee collection. As they learn and gain more experience, then they'll be able to do the type of patrol where they might be required to do rescues and so forth like that, tow boats and stuff. So it's a kind of a gradual learn-on-the-job type thing. And as they gain more experience. So, it's a kind of a gradual learn-on-the-job type thing, and as they gain more experience, they can move up. In the past, 20 years ago, when we set up this structure, after a couple of years of working their way up, then we would send them to a part-time police academy. They would become a police officer, and then they would be able to do the patrol work. And I'll comment a little bit more on that as we get further along. Hingham Waterways, that's basically what this is. And I like to start kind of at the A at the bottom. That's what most people are familiar with. That's the inner harbor. Everyone kind of goes down there and like, well, that's the harbor. And that is the harbor, but that's just part of it. It goes all the way out to where that big D is. That's Bumpkin Island. So, if you were to measure from A out to D, that's about three and a half miles. And that's slightly short from the distance from the inner harbor to Queen Anne's Corner, just to give you a distance. Queen Anne's Corner is about four and a half. That's about three and a half, so it's about a mile short, a little less than that. And in the inner harbor there at A, we have, there's four islands there, Button Island, Ragged, Sarin, Langley. Those are all within, obviously, within the town of Hingham. We manage those. They are part of the national parks, but myself is the custodian of the island, oversee them and manage them on a daily basis. And then out there in area D, that's Bumpkin Island. If you look at where B is, that's Crow Point. That's the outer harbor, Hingham Yacht Club. And then if you go towards the left, you come down towards C, that's the Hingham Shipyard, the Back River. And then E is World's End. The backside there is where we have a lot of boats that tend to raft on the weekends. And the entire coastline is about 26 miles of coastline. So, that's essentially the boundaries of Hingham Waterways, and that's what we focus our efforts on. Call-wise, we handle about 1,000 calls in any given year. It's somewhat challenging to really capture all the calls that we do. Some of the younger guys, men and women, don't always feel comfortable being on a radio and calling some of the stuff that they do in, so we don't capture all of it. But we do capture the larger calls, the more significant ones. And like I said, that's about 1,000. I have put up a couple of different calls so you can see some of the stuff that we respond to on the water. And then administratively, some of the different statistics, like I said, about 1,300 permitted boats. We have about 372 transient boat permits that we issue. Those are the recreational boats that come in. In any given week, there's about 24 hours of pump-out services that go out, where the boat goes out and does the recreational boat pump-outs. That pumps about 278 boats within any calendar year. About 6,000 gallons of waste was pumped this past year. Those numbers are down from previous years, but they're still good numbers. We bring in revenues primarily from mooring fees. And I just kind of chart them out here so you can see what the revenues look like. There, you can see that they increased, I can't from, I can't see the exact numbers, but there's about four years where they steadily climbed. That was due to rate increases. There was a schedule of rate increases, so you can see that they increased. Then they kind of plateaued with a little bit of a dip there. One of the challenges, the biggest challenge we have is staff, our inability to, as I mentioned, to send people to a part-time academy. That dip there was our, we had some challenges with actually getting out for mooring permanent enforcement that year, which is where we go out and check all the boats for fees. A lot of people will voluntarily get their permits, but some don't. So, if we don't get out there every year and thoroughly go through the harbor and check all the boats, you'll see a dip like that. That year, we had a challenge. This year, I made sure we got out there and did the checks so you can see that we brought the revenues back up. So, I anticipate that if we're able to do those checks again next year, you'll see the revenues stay consistent going forward in '24.
Ken, does that include the transient as well?
That will include the transient in there. Most, the majority of it is the annual permit, but there is some other fees like the transients, and we do have some other smaller fees, but the bulk of it is the mooring fee.
Sure, okay.
One key initiative I'd like to bring back is boater education. We did offer that course a number of years ago, but we've kind of sidelined it just because of the hours it takes and the staff to kind of put it out there. But we continuously get requests for it every year, so I'm hoping to try to put that on this spring and try to bring it back every year if I can get that into our schedule. We do have, you know, every weekend, we have a party in World's End, if you're familiar with it. But we've done a really a great job of trying to manage that these past couple of years. I think the boaters have found it to be much more enjoyable now. We do have the five-boat raft limits, and that's worked out really well. I think the people have found that to be much more enjoyable, and it's definitely manageable for us. That area does really require us to keep a boat over there on any given Saturday or Sunday. It basically ties up a boat the whole day. We do have other area events like Waukopolooza. We don't necessarily have to be over there, but just these events when they're in the area, they're, you know, we see a lot more boat traffic in town. And we do have Hingham Bay Junior Regatta. There's numerous sailing and rowing events. And we have our Independence Day fireworks events here in the past and hopefully coming back, maybe. We have Memorial Day events, the annual harbor celebration, and we are looking forward to potentially a 2026 Sail Boston event. So, there's some big events coming up forward, which will require more staff. Again, not that we have to necessarily be at these events, but just when they take place, we see more activity within the community, whether they be our people leaving town or launching at the boat ramp or just coming into town to visit, go to World's End. There's a lot more activity. A couple of our projects right now, we're refurbishing Marine One. That's out for bid. We're looking at the 2024 MBKA commuter dock upgrades. We're continuously working on our camera system, which is really great for us. It allows us to be in our office and kind of see what's going on throughout the harbor without always having to just get underway and drive around to see the different areas. And we're starting a little bit early now, but we're starting to look towards 2029 and dredging requirements and permitting. It's taking a lot longer to get dredging permits, so we're starting to plan for that. Just a couple images of our boats and some of the different things that we do. The top left is a fire in the Ware River that we put out. That was 2022. And then that's Marine Two on the right there at Sector Boston. So, for personal services, basically, all the increases there are step increases. And then for expenses, there are a couple increases. Nothing that I think is significant. Most of them are either contractual or just increases, you know, due to regular operational. But I don't think there's anything really significant that I need to jump into. The only thing I would like to point out is in grounds, we do have a large number of 25,000 there. So, I'd just like to kind of parse it out exactly what that is. We have about $10,000 there that goes to our lease for the shipyard, and then about another $10,000 that goes towards keeping the boats, the Harbor Master boats, in the slips at the shipyard. So, 20 of that gets expelled pretty quickly towards those, and that leaves us about another $5,000 towards just moorings and the other types of maintenance that we do around the harbor. So, it's a large number, but it gets distributed pretty quickly.
Excellent. Thank you.
I don't know if there's any questions on that. I do have a couple other points at the end.
Do you have any questions or do you want to present the additional requests?
Yeah, maybe that's the best way to do it.
Sure. Go ahead.
For additional requests, I'm looking to, or I'm asking to have the Harbor Masters' hours increased from 35 to 40 continuously for the last 20 years. There's really no such thing as a 35-hour work week, especially during the summer. It's not uncommon to put in a 60 or a 70-hour work week. So, I think if we can put that at a 40-hour work week, that would be commensurate with the work and would be appreciated. The other item I'd like to, I'm requesting is to have, we have an unfunded overtime budget. And as I mentioned, the biggest challenge that I have is making sure that we always have patrols on the water, especially during the boating, mainly during the boating season, which goes from the end of April through early October, seven days a week, close to 16 hours a day. And right now, that's basically done by myself, Joe Driscoll, and we have one or two part-time assistants that are police officers that also have, know how to run a boat, respond to certain maritime events, and perform these types of water rescues. So, I'm looking to have this, about $15,000 in this, put into this overtime account that we'd be able to fund approximately 24 days of roughly 12-hour shifts. And we'd be able to, when we can't fill certain weekend days or, you know, whether it be Friday, Saturday, or Sunday patrol shift, tap into the patrol division within the police department and have them staff the boat. And I think it's, I think it's a, it's a positive move in the right direction. The system that we set up 20 years ago worked then, where we would put people to the part-time academy, but that's no longer a viable option with police reform now. And I, for the last two years, I've worked really diligently to try to find other police officers that would work here on a part-time basis. We found some. I'm continuing to work on that, but it's very difficult to find them. And if we're able to work with this type of a structure of having them help us out in the boats, it does a couple of things. One is it keeps, it keeps some of the training that we're able to offer within our division, some of the unique training that we're able to send officers to within the department. So, there's a lot of unique things that we're able to go do as Harbor Masters that we would be able to potentially send some of these patrolmen to, which we started to this past year, and keep it within the department. And if there are any types of incidents within the Port of Boston, we're able to draw from the patrol division to help us out on the waters, and they'll have that requisite training, whether it be homeland security-related or just maritime law enforcement or search and rescue. Another thing that I think it does, and I don't want to speak too much about the chief's area, but I think it also is really kind of, you know, for me and some of my staff, you know, we're on the boats a lot. It's hot, it's sunny, and it becomes, you know, your daily work, and it kind of loses that novelty. But I think for some of the patrolmen that are on, in a car all the time, the ability to go out on a boat, even on a hot, sunny day, even though it might be work and they're working, it's a little bit of a novelty, and I think that that's another benefit for a smaller police department such as Hingham Police Department, to be able to offer that for its officers. So, I think that's another great opportunity there. And, you know, there's a lot of cross-training. You know, we do a lot on land when they need help, and for them to be able to help us on the water, I think, would be great. And if they have some of this training, you know, I do a lot of, I come in from home a lot. I respond to calls, you know. I'm one of the few employees, I think, and I say this slightly because I don't want to, I'll say it differently. You know, I respond from home a lot. There's an incident on the water, and I leave my house, and I'm the first one to arrive to an incident where there's nobody else there. So, that is challenging. It can be stressful and difficult to always have to be ready and available to be able to get there. So, if you have some other patrolmen that have some of the training and ability to be able to, if possible, there's enough staffing and certain things line up, that they could either assist me or potentially even respond to that call, can take a little bit of the strain and burden off myself and also potentially improve our department operations and make sure that we don't have a situation where something comes up and we're not able to respond, that there's nobody available. If something were to happen to me right now, I'm out of work for a little while. There's really nobody right now that, other than my head assistant, if he's not available, that can meet all these calls when they come in. So, we want to just make sure that we have some other people that are trained, other people that are able to respond to these calls and also back us up. Right now, my only, one of my few backups is Boston Police, which is great, but it would be nice to be able to know that we can have some people within our own department that are able to support us and back us up on the waterfront. So, those are my two requests. I know that there's limits to what we can fund, and I know that these requests probably go over that, but I'm hoping that maybe we can, you know, come up with some creative ways to look at this and maybe come up with some solutions. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. It's definitely an interesting idea. So, the overtime amount, that would cover overtime and the training or?
So, that would cover overtime. Uniquely enough, some of the training that we actually do is grant-funded. So, we have a unique grant with Boston, so we do a lot of radiation and nuclear detection as part of our Homeland Security mission. That's funded and paid for through Boston Police.
Okay.
So, this request would fund training and would fund the patrols. There wouldn't be a whole lot of specific training that we'd have to send people. We would do a lot of that in-house.
Okay.
But if there was something specific we needed to send people to, we'd be able to cover the cost of that, if it's not already covered by a grant.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you. Joe?
Great presentation. Thank you. I'm going to go back to your very first slide. What was the distance out to Bumpkin Island from the inner harbor?
Beyond Bumpkin Island, I think it's about, I measured it today.
No, from inner harbor to the Bumpkin?
It's about 3.18 miles, to be exact, I believe.
So, the reason I ask is, as a rower, we would row out and around Bumpkin and come back. I didn't know what that distance was.
But it's further out. It's beyond Bumpkin, all the way out to the end of the boundary line, but that's-
So, it's, that's an, I feel good about that.
He might need a rescue.
And Ken knows where I'm going here, but it's good to know that you were always in Hingham Water.
Yes.
That's right.
In Hall Water.
Especially when you row around Bumpkin Island.
That's exactly right.
Find some other maps if you see them.
That's right. Turning to the mooring permits, what percent are held by residents and what percent are non-residents? Do you?
So, that's a good question. I don't, I didn't run those numbers before coming here.
Ballpark numbers.
I don't want to guess and be inaccurate on that.
Where I was going is, that is a source of revenue for the town from non-residents. So, you know, we have user fees. When you go to the transfer station, it's residents paying. This is now non-residents paying. It'd be interesting, I'd like to know to what extent we're getting revenue from outside the town to support these activities.
So, I can get you the numbers on residents, non-residents. I can run that, and I can provide that. So, mooring fees are, they're a fee, so we just have to be careful that it's not a tax. So, it has to be commensurate with the service provided, the cost.
In years past, I recall concern from primarily non-residents about the notice going out to get their mooring permits. And is that now under control? It's going out in a reasonable fashion, and people know what?
Yes. We're continuously trying to improve that, and I believe it's going out.
Great.
In a good manner for them.
Also, in past years, you have surprised us with incredible grants or money coming in that you've applied for and secured for the town. Anything in your bag of tricks for this year?
So, I, there are a couple of grants out right now. We did, we did get a grant with, we're part of the, a grant with Boston for securing the cities against radiation and nuclear detection. So, that's a $4 million grant that Boston has, and we're, we get training from that, which they pay for. We've put a bunch of our assistants through that. We've also put a couple of, some of the patrolmen through that. And we're receiving equipment, nuclear and radiation detecting, detection equipment from that. The equipment is about $150,000, so we'll be deploying that on our boats. And also, it's available throughout the community if we want to use it for any type of events and so forth. So, we have that. We'll see what comes up in the next year.
Great. Thank you.
I think we've done about $6 million total in grants in the last 10 years.
Oh, it's been remarkable. It really has. And then, just one last point. You mentioned bringing the officers who are not in your department onto the boats and sort of getting that training. And this is a question maybe for you as well as for the chief. So, I've seen some of those officers- So I've seen some of those officers in really hot weather, wearing the long pants, wearing uniforms that are not necessarily conducive to an enjoyable summer day. Is there anything that in, in the offing for the department so that the, uh your officers are more comfortable in those uh hot days?
They go in the boats. They can wear shorts.
Okay, okay. I want that on the record.
Yeah, shorts are, shorts are pretty standard when it's, when it's hot on the boat.
But, yeah, when, when they're on land, I, I think that's.
They're hard to lock on land, yes.
Okay.
I guess, about the grants, um the more we can try to um mix operations a little bit within the abilities that we can, I think that will open up more grant avenues from some of the things that we do on the water, more on land. The more we can combine some of the, within, within the limits that we have, the more that we can cross-train a little bit, will open up some of those avenues.
Great. Thank you.
Makes sense. Great. Bill?
Um just a question and a point. Um so you mentioned that the islands within Hingham Harbor are part of the National Park Service. I remember you and I talking about that a couple of years ago when we were working on the fireworks issue. Given the fact that they are uh National Park Service islands, and we patrol them um pretty actively, is the federal government giving us any money to have jurisdiction over those islands? I mean, you're performing law enforcement functions. Well, you're performing law enforcement functions on these federal islands, I would think that the federal government would give some sort of grant or some sort of federal funds to say, and I, I probably understand that you have concurrent jurisdiction with the Coast Guard, obviously. But you are actively patrolling these islands.
We receive a lot of um port security, homeland security funds. Um mainly through our um policing of the transportation system through the ferries. So we do receive a lot of um federal policing funds through homeland security. Nothing necessarily through um the National Park Service. But they do work, the National Park Service does, especially with the, so Bumpkin Island out there by, on D, the National Park Service does most of the, they, they really manage the maintenance of that island and the policing on a day-to-day basis with the campers. Um if there's an emergency, then we'll respond out there. When we come into the inner harbor islands, we have to, we manage the, the manage, we manage that island every year, whether it's clearing the brush, opening up the trails, dealing with the campers, making sure the campsites are clear and available. The National Park will come in and help us with making sure that the campsites are in the right, right location. They're currently trying to help us with some picnic tables, so we don't really have big expenditures there. Um but they're helping us to try to make sure we do the, some of the improvements. But there haven't been any grants in that respect. But we do get a lot of um homeland security funds for policing.
Would, but that's for the ferry?
That's around the transportation system, yeah.
Okay. And the, and the other, only point I would make is I, I loved your idea of the, the cross-training. Um I think it would be beneficial to um our officers to get that training. I think it'll also be very popular with them as well. I guess my only concern would be, we just heard from the chief on staffing concerns, and also on overtime budget concerns. So I guess you, you and the chief will have to figure out how you can best do this, where personnel are allocated for, not training, so much training, but the patrols, and how do we do that within the budget constraints we're working under. But I think it's a very creative idea, and I think it would be very popular within the department.
And they can wear shorts, so.
I'll point out, Joe, the bike officers can wear shorts too.
Excellent. Thank you, Ken. Great presentation.
Thank you very thoroughly.
Chief Murphy.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I can have him stay if you want.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Thank you. Thank you for your patience.
Yeah, no problem at all. And I. Saving the best for last, is that?
That's right.
Thanks. I apologize. Uh Deputy Le Chance usually attends these, uh but it was his son's sixteenth birthday, and I told him to go do that. You know, I think I can kind of handle the budget presentation tonight, so.
Excellent.
Um okay, to, to start off, so uh the first slide, the mission and services. Um to be perfectly honest with you, we haven't changed that slide in a few years. Our mission doesn't really change, you know. Um with the exception of the fact that occasionally we're adding new things that are part of that mission, you know. So for example, you know, many years ago, we didn't consider um ASR, active shooter type of situations as falling under our preview. Um and obviously that is, you know, become a bigger part of our training and stuff like that. So the, the core, you know, mission and services don't change, but we have to constantly adapt in the fire service. And you know, whether or not it's a new challenge or a change to an old challenge that we have. Uh for example, lithium ion, um car fires um and battery fires are a significant challenge right now for fire services across the country. Um we're not really, you know, trained, and even if we were trained, there isn't really the proper equipment to deal with some of these issues. Um New York City is having huge problems with it, especially the smaller items like the scooters and stuff like that. So this is how we constantly adapt, and we kind of, you know, deal with the changes as they come. But the core mission and services remains the same. Uh if you go to the next slide. Um so our organizational chart, we have um, we are budgeted for sixty-one full-time employees. With myself, then two deputy chiefs, similar to the police department. Uh Deputy Le Chance over, is considered the deputy chief of administration, also oversees EMS. And as I kind of like to think of it, he's second-in-command, uh kind of more big picture, um involved in a lot more of the funding, doing with the budget. Um he writes most of our grants, uh oversees the EMS, and kind of more closer towards what my role is. Uh Deputy Levinson is Deputy Chief of Operations and Training, and he is more on the day-to-day operations. So he meets with the four shift commanders, which are four captains on a daily basis, and you know, makes sure that everyone on the shifts are up to speed in any operational training things or anything else. Uh in addition, we also have a fire prevention division, which has one full-time person assigned to it. Uh but we also have a second person uh that assists as necessary. And right now, our um fire marshal lieutenant, Dan Appleby, has been out with an injury. So the second person, we moved them from their regular uh twenty-four hour shift into fire prevention, and he's actually been doing a great job taking over for that. Uh we also have, uh it's, they're also dual-trained, but we have our mechanics division that, you know, master mechanic and assistant mechanic, they are on shift normally as firefighters. But they do uh assist when they're working with vehicle maintenance, and they will uh perform additional me, vehicle maintenance on their days off. Uh and then we have, between the three stations, we have twelve lieutenants, um and then thirty-eight firefighters that encompass our department. Uh if you go to the benchmarks, uh call volume, so you can see that our, a, a total call volume continues to increase. Uh but what's interesting, and I don't actually have an explanation for it, is our EMS call volume was down a little bit last year, um which is surprising because our EMS call volume is about seventy percent of our, you know, overall call volume. So not necessarily sure why that number went down, but if you look at the next slide, which uh breaks down per month of our ambulance um transports, you can actually see that the entire year, um with the exception of going back to January, was actually a little bit low. And um I really, like I said, I don't know why, um why that's the case or anything else. It might have been um just, you know, uh kind of secondary to COVID, that, you know, in twenty twenty-two, people were more used to going to the hospital. I, I don't have an explanation for that. But we're still um running pretty standard on the, you know, the same metrics that we've been doing for the last few years. Um some of our key initiatives this last few, uh last year has been really working to fill the vacant positions. Um happy to um present that we sent four members to the Fire Academy. They are all successfully graduated, uh all working on shifts, so that helped fill in some positions. We are currently working to fill the vacancies. The town was generous enough to support us for four additional positions effective on July one. Uh so we are in the process of trying to fill those right now. And similar to the police department, the um personnel isn't there, you know, to be honest with you, and this is a nationwide problem. Um we currently, so prior to the four positions, we had one vacancy. The four positions bumped it up to five, and we had one of our female firefighters that had a baby back in October, and she decided that this wasn't the career for her any longer, uh so she resigned effective January first. So now we're up to six vacancies. Uh but nationwide, that seems to be about standard in fire service, to be about ten percent, um you know, open vacancies. Um and everyone's struggling, you know. We are, as you know, we're civil service community. Um we called for a list for paramedics um about a week ago. There are two hundred and ten names statewide that are paramedics, you know. And unfortunately, many of those are well-known. Um and some are good, some are bad. Some are, you know, firefighters that are already working in other communities, that are hoping, they keep on taking the test, hoping to get on a department like Cambridge or Boston or something else, and they're just keeping their options open. Um others are employees that have gotten either terminated or passed over from many, many different departments. And when I go to chief's um, you know, uh meetings, we all kind of joke about it and say, oh, did you see so-and-so came down on the list or anything else? So they're well-known. So there are not a lot of vacancies, or not a lot of employees out there. And unfortunately, as of yesterday, I was at a conference today, but as of yesterday, the list had been out there for about four days, and we still hadn't had any candidates come in to express interest, you know. So um there will be new candidates. The civil service changed it. It used to be a bi-annual exam. Uh now it's going to be an annual exam, and they will merge the old list with the new list. So that should happen sometime in either March or April. Um so we're trying to see what we can get with this. Uh and then we will continue to try for uh another list come March or April, whenever the new one comes out. And it's usually something that as soon as it hits the, you know, the paperwork in a sense, and every chief is trying for it and trying to jump on it. And uh we used to, we actually meet, either myself or Deputy Le Chance, will meet with every candidate that comes in to just sign the list. And we have a whole packet about the department and, you know, um about Hingham, everything else, trying to sell them on the job. And it's something that ten, fifteen years ago, we used to see probably twenty applicants for every position we had. Now it is the complete opposite. The candidates are coming in and telling us that, especially when the new list comes out, that they've gotten twenty-five different emails from different departments that are hiring, and they're picking and choosing. So we want to make sure we educate them, uh because, you know, we don't want them to come here and spend a year here and decide that this isn't the right fit for them or anything else, and then leave to go to someplace else. So we're very honest with them, and we talk to them a lot about our town, about our department and everything else, hoping that we can recruit them, but also hoping to recruit them for the long haul, you know. So it's a challenge. Um we are considering other um initiatives, such as instead of hiring paramedics, whether or not we need to hire EMTs and have them assigned to the ambulance. It would be a change in our service delivery model, um and it, it's something that we would have to negotiate with the union. I'm not necessarily a huge fan of it, but I recognize the fact that we have to fill these positions, you know. So we may need to start thinking outside of the box. Some other communities have done it with varying levels of success. Uh but it is something we're exploring. Obviously, we've had a, you know, continued involvement in the public safety building. And a lot of our uh last year was really spent doing larger-scale or new type of training. So um we participated with the police department, with um many other area of fire departments and police departments, in a large s- um scale active shooter drill at Blue Cross Blue Shield. Uh we've also had a lot of mandatory training that's come down from a state level. Um so we had to do mandatory um canine training on, there's a state law that um went through about two years ago, and it's mandatory for all of our personnel to go through to learn how to actually treat the police canines, in case any of them are injured or anything else. And now uh the law actually allows us to transport the uh canines in the ambulance. So we had to go through, do that training. Uh the state also mandated ASR training, which is active shooter hostile event um response training. Uh we have also liked the, as um Ken was just talking about, um there's a lot of boat operator courses that are out there. A lot of the training is, um most of it actually is all free um for us through either the Coast Guard or through some other maritime type of our um programs. So we've taken advantage of that and put more members through it, uh because we also do have a boat that's out there. It's in the water um all summer, but we don't staff it. Our members are dual-trained, so especially those that work down in West Hingham are dual-trained in it. And if there's a boat fire or a search out there or a rescue or anything else, then they have the ability to go um hop in the boat and then go assist and work with Ken's officers as well. Uh and something that we've had success with in the past is our EMS bike teams that we use for road races. We use them for uh the Fourth of July Road Race, the Fourth of July Parade. We used to use them for the fireworks. Um and they're very, very good. It's been a few years since we had put some members through, so a lot of the members that had the training were not really interested in doing it. So we need to get some younger personnel in there. So we hosted a um bike course. And I'm happy to announce that um we actually did, put all of our members through a EVAC course, emergency vehicle operator, which is something, believe it or not, we've been trying to get for years. It's just, there's not a lot of instructors that teach this out there. So we were able to finally do that. Uh and then in the last year, um we've received um one hundred and forty-three thousand in federal grants or state grants. Um some of those are recurring type of things. So we um are actually waiting on a contract from the Mass Department of Fire Services for a grant for, I think it's nineteen thousand dollars, uh that we're going to use to buy new type of rescue turnout gear. If you remember a few weeks ago, I came to you guys asking to purchase some rescue slash wildland gear so that, you know, they could use it on uh non-structural fire calls. Um we're also supplementing the money that we um repurposed through capital from the nineteen thousand from the state to be able to use that. Uh and our grant opportunities are opening up in January and February for the AFG grant. And we're already working on a few big applications for that, including some training with some other um regional partners, some other mutual aid fire departments and stuff as well. So. If you want to go down to the budget, um so a couple of things on the budget. First off, just to um point out, um the numbers you are seeing now, um many of them appear fairly flat on the salary items. Um and that's because the, these are based on FY twenty-four's budget numbers. Uh the um collective bargaining agreement with the fire department ends uh June thirtieth of twenty twenty-four. Um so we have not actually negotiated a new contract yet. Uh so these are based on old numbers, so there's no COLA increases or anything else built into this. Uh most of the changes that you do see are just changes because of, you know, for example, longevity as members are, you know, aging, then more members are becoming eligible for longevity. Um we also had a few members that um left that had educational, so that's why you're seeing a decrease in that amount. And just one thing to point out that is a huge increase on the salary numbers is the stipends. What we're doing with that is stipends is um basically about firefighter fitness. And so that is, uh used to be just to cover the firefighter fitness incentive, which is a voluntary program, uh similar to what the police have, and the members can go and participate in a fitness exam. And if they pass, then they get a additional stipend for that. Uh we actually are expanding it a little bit, and um cancer in the fire service is a huge concern. It's actually currently the number one leading cause of death for firefighters and retired firefighters. Um so we just started a new program. Um it's actually contained in the um collective bargaining agreement as well, that we are now testing our firefighters on a cancer program on an annual basis. Um we just did our first round uh back in early December, uh and we'll be repeating that. But that is the uh thirty thousand dollar increase in there is for the cancer testing and stuff. And we're hoping that that kind of pays dividends in the long run for both the, you know, health of the members and um potentially impacting any of our OJI injuries or anything else as well. Uh moving down to expenses, as Randy said, um vehicles are a problem. They really are. And you guys approved a contract with us for our fire engine in, I believe it was May of twenty twenty-two. Um and we're still waiting on delivery. Um we, it used to be years ago that an ambulance would take about four to six months for build time. Uh fire engine, not the ladder truck, but a regular engine would be about six to eight months, and then a ladder truck would be about a year. That engine was ordered in May of twenty twenty-two. That engine was ordered in May of 2022 and we don't anticipate it until late spring, early summer at best. We don't even know, as far as we know, they're not even building the truck yet. That we may have a VIN number assigned to it, but that's it, you know? So this is what we're dealing with, the same thing with the ambulances. We had placed an order officially for an ambulance for FY24, but unofficially in the, I think you guys have heard me mention this beforehand, many of the ambulance manufacturers will just take a, you know, non-commitment type of order. And we had done that about a year and a half ago, knowing the fact that it was taking about two years for an ambulance build. We were hoping to get it before the end of 2023 and now we're looking at sometime in the spring of, you know, so a few months from now. But most of what we're hearing is that the ambulances are two to three years and the engines are at least three years, you know, on the build time. So that's a huge thing. And the maintenance on them is, as Randy mentioned, the fees for the labor and the fees for the parts and everything else are escalating, and actually the purchase fees are escalating in a unsustainable rate, you know? A few years ago, like for example, the, back in 2016, we bought two fire engines. They're about $550,000 apiece. Right now, we're requesting 1.25 million for one engine. And that's a similar type of, you know, expense. It's just, it's ridiculous, the same thing. The ambulance is a few years ago, we were in the $300,000 range for the base ambulance without adding in the stretchers and everything else that we include of it. Right now, we, we're not asking for one for FY25, but if we were, we'd be asking for probably about 500 to 500 and a quarter or something like that. It's unbelievable how much they've jumped. And, you know, the maintenance on them is the same thing. You look at our, our actual budget for R and M vehicles for last year, $185,000. A lot of these are big ticket items to do with the fuel exhaust systems and everything else. And, you know, they have filters in them that need to be replaced that cost $7,000 apiece and they're backordered for months. So we have a vehicle that might sit in our bay for three months waiting for a part, you know? And now we're using older vehicles and everything. So I sympathize with Randy when he was commenting about that. Some of our other expenses, the utilities, you can see that the, you know, increases. I know you guys can see the notes off on the side on that with the fact that we missed the 6% increase for FY23 and, I'm sorry, FY24 and we're being told an increase for FY24. One big thing, and I don't know if you guys have the ability to pull down on the items, but scheduling software is actually a multiple items on there. It doesn't, the view that I'm seeing, I don't see it, but when we actually look at the budget, it's multiple things. So we just met with advisory the other day and kind of explained this. So scheduling software, the name is actually a misnomer. It's actually for all software to do with the fire department. It's not just the scheduling software. And there's a couple of different subcategories under that. So the first is one that a few years ago, we, it's for, actually for the scheduling software, which is funny, but a few years ago, we used to carry that in our budget. And then last year, I think it was decided that that was going to get carried in IT's budget. Unfortunately, it didn't really make it over to IT's budget. Fortunately, it was a short amount. It's only $5,000 and Bill Hardigan was able to pay for it. But we've had, or I've had discussions with Bill and he used to feel that, and I think Steve Becker did as well, that when he's buying hardware in association, then like, for example, our old software that we used to use for the ambulance, we hosted everything ourselves. And so he had to have servers, he had to have everything else. It made sense for that to be under Steve's budget or then now Bill's budget. But the software that we're using is all cloud-based. And so Bill felt that we know the increases and it might be easier to carry it back to our, to our budget. So that's 5,000 of the 32,8. There's another software that we've been carrying ourselves for a few years out of, and it's normally out of our workshops and in-service programs. And it's to do with our, it's a program to allow us to do recertification for our EMTs and paramedics that pre-COVID, we used to actually bring in a lot of instructors to do paramedic refreshers and EMT refreshers. Now it's all virtual. And so we've been carrying that for a few years. So we actually decreased the travel amount by 5,200 to carry it into that software account, just to kind of put everything in the, you know, same software category. We are asking for one or two additional items in software. One is $2,500 expense for a new software that they would use on the ambulance to help make sure that they get pediatric drug doses correct. We used to use, you know, regular paper charts. They don't get updated correctly and, or not correctly in a timely manner and we're constantly redoing them and everything else. So a lot of other services are actually using a software that we would have right on the MDT's and it calculates out the drug-based weights and everything else very easily. And the final thing, and I know it hasn't, Tom hasn't made his final budget recommendations, but we currently do not pay for our fire reporting software. It's currently carried by the Shrek and the software that the Shrek is using is outdated to say is a nice word. And it's completely antiquated and the manufacturer has announced that they're no longer supporting it. So the Shrek is, or intends to apply for a state 911 grant to replace that. And unfortunately, the current software is one software that does the dispatch software, police and fire. Doesn't do any of them well, but it does all three of them. The new software that they're looking at would only do the police and the dispatch. There is no fire module for it, so we would end up having to use a separate fire module. They believe, because other regional community or other regional dispatch centers are a little ahead in the game on this, and they believe that the state will cover this and they also believe that they will cover the fire component of it. But I'm asking for $20,000 in here, and like I said, it hasn't made it through Tom yet, but I'm asking for 20,000 in case the Shrek does not get the approval for it or if they only get the approval for the police and the dispatch program, because we need to do this. This is what we do, all of our fire reports, all of our regular inspections, everything. This is like our bread and butter type of software that we use.
Should be an easy cut. Thanks, Steve.
Other increases that I have, there's, you can see that there's a big one for in-state travel. And that's just because the only thing that we actually use in-state travel for, it's actually in our contract, is when we send new recruits to the fire academy, we actually pay their mileage because they're going for five days straight for 11 weeks. That's the only thing that it covers and we're hoping to be able to send at least, you know, four, if not six, employees. And the current budget wouldn't amount, wouldn't cover that. So that would be a one-time increase and then we back it down to the, to the regular levels again next year. And let me look at my notes if I missed anything else. This is, I think that covers what I have for my presentation, so.
Do you have any questions, Joe?
Just one, which is the question I had on the police side, just making sure that you're managing overtime, because that's.
Yes. And I, I actually, so like police or Chief Jones, our overtime is a complicated thing. You know, currently we have two employees that are on long-term OJI and that really eats into it. We also have one employee that is deployed with the Army Reserves and he is not due back until I think in June or July. So that's for a one-year activation. So all of these things really kind of impact it. I do believe that the increase in our staffing level that the town supported last year will definitely help that because that allows one additional person to be out per shift before we have to hire overtime. The problem is, is that we have to fill that position to be able to utilize that, you know, benefit from it. That's why we are decreasing our overtime a little bit from last year. We kind of tried to play a little bit with what actual was versus, you know, adding the additional money in for the additional salaries and where we think we will be. I do think that's going in the right direction and I think that is a solution. It's just we got to get to that point to actually be able to utilize it.
Great. No other questions. Thank you.
Right. So we, when we added the extra positions last year, we knew it would, there'd be at least a year lag, right?
Right. Yes.
So now are we, are we at like 18 months or two-year lag, would you say?
It usually takes us a year from the point that we get the person in the door, that, you know, interviewing them and everything else until we can actually get them through a fire academy and get them on shift and actually making a difference. So yeah, we might still be a year from getting them in the door. We're, like I said, I'm, you know, it's unfortunate, but during my tenure here, there's only been about a three-month period where we did not have any vacancies, you know? It's just the nature of this because of, you know, and sometimes it's not even regular retirements. We've had individuals that have retired earlier than we anticipated. It's not like, you know, 30 years ago, it was a career for people and you looked at it and people worked until they met their mandatory retirement and then they would leave. Or at a, you know, the earliest, they wouldn't leave until then. We're seeing employees that are doing this job for a few years and then say, this isn't it for me anymore. Or they're moving or they're going into other departments or anything else. And it's not just us. This is, you know, when I talk to other chiefs, it's the same thing. It's, you know, it's recruitment and retention is probably one of the number one biggest challenges in the fire service right now. So I'd love to say that yes, that will solve it, but realistically, on the six that we're trying to hire right now, I'd be ecstatic if I got two people that we can actually hire, you know? And know the fact that in three months, we'll try to hire another four then and maybe we get two. And, you know, it's, it's unfortunate, but the days of us actually recruiting six people at once and actually hiring them all at the same time is, it's not realistic.
Yeah. Yeah. So. No, I understand that's a challenge and not just here. But if there are things that you think we can do to help recruitment and retention, please let us know.
Okay.
Bill?
Yeah, I'd say that's the problem with the, with the lag is that we have no one in the pipeline, right? So, and it's not just a Hingham problem, it's a problem nationwide of individuals going into the fire service, which is just unfortunate because it's a wonderful career. You did mention that you're seeing more, more recruits going to places like Cambridge and Boston, bigger departments. What do you think attracts them? Is it the advancement opportunities or the pay or both?
It depends on the individual, you know? We have lost individuals to smaller departments as well, but a place like Cambridge, we'll never be able to compare to them, you know, on all levels. The pay is higher, they have a lot more opportunities within their department. I mean, their, you know, their staffing level, I was actually at the conference I was at today, it was on hazardous materials and hospital responses and the, you know, pre-hospital environment. And someone on the board with me that, or the panel with me was from Cambridge Fire, one of my friends. And, you know, their first alarm assignment has 65 fighters going to it, you know? Our entire department is 65 fighters and, you know, that's for a typical response. Now, they have a lot of different challenges that we don't have. And one of the hazmat incidents was to do with students at MIT and, you know, playing around with chemicals and all that stuff. But, you know, we don't, we're not faced with that, but they offer a lot of other opportunities that we'll never be able to do, you know? And part of it, to be honest with you, is there are some people that want to be firefighters. They don't want to be firefighter, paramedics or working on a service that runs the ambulance that has a 70% call volume. They want to do just a fire thing and that's a Boston. You know, they don't run the ambulance, they still respond to medical calls, but not at the same extent that we're doing, you know? So there are different things, you know, that attract people. Some of them are the pay, some of them are promotional, some of them are, you know, the specialties that, you know, Cambridge has their own hazmat team. They have all these other type of things that we will never be able to offer.
Just one last follow-up question. Do our firefighters, do they do the firefighting and, and ambulance together? I mean, do they, do they kind of rotate through the different duties responsibilities?
Yes. For firefighter, paramedics, yes. They, you know, we, we've gone back and forth on it, to be honest with you, whether it's better to have a one-year rotation. So someone might be driving the engine for a year straight versus doing it at a month-to-month type of thing. And I don't know the right answer. We've been debating this and there's different, you know, thoughts on it for a long time because we need everyone to be competent in doing both roles, you know? So sometimes if you take someone, you put them on the engine for a year, then they lose their paramedic skills, you know? And likewise, if we don't have them on the engine, then they lose those skills and we need them as both.
So we're going to be putting forward an article tonight that may help you with bringing new firefighters into the department. But I, I think at some point, we should probably sit with Chief Jones and Chief Murphy and figure out how we can help.
Absolutely.
With them with recruitment because it's, it's a concern for me, not only with the overtime budgets, but also just for public safety issues.
Absolutely.
So thank you, Chief.
Yes, thank you. All right. You want to do public safety utilities?
That's Tom.
Okay.
I saved the big budget for myself. So the public safety utilities budget is really two things. It's emergency water, so that's the water that's in the 900-plus hydrants that we have. And then it's also funding the streetlights in town. So it's a grand total of $563,000. We are reducing the hydrant budget within the emergency water section by about $10,000, which is that full line item, simply because the Weir River Water System now is doing the hydrant replacements and the fire service doesn't need to do those like they used to back in the pre-Weir River Water System days. And then the utilities are up quite a bit as they are everywhere. Any questions?
No questions.
So, well, I have a question actually. So the electric utilities, so the budget for the streetlights and traffic lights, is any of that compensated by the pilot?
By the, not.
Not really, right?
No.
You could say that it offsets it, but that just kind of comes in as revenue supporting the whole budget.
Yeah, okay. All right. Any questions, Joe?
No questions.
None.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. We, okay, so next is to submit select board-sponsored one articles for 2024 Annual Town Meeting. Do you want to come back up? Chief? And we'll do acceptance of MGL Chapter 31, Section 58A, Veterans Civil Service Appointment.
Okay. So my understanding, and I had a conversation with John Cofflin about this, that back in 2012, so to step back, the, under civil service, there are two basically categories for upper age limits on hiring new recruits. And this is for police or fire. There are some communities that have adopted no upper age limit. And so they could actually hire someone, a new firefighter that's 60 years old. There is a state limit that all public safety have to retire by 65th birthday, but they could hire someone theoretically that was 62 years old and still have them work for three years or anything else. Second to that, under civil service, so that's the communities that have no upper age limit. Second to that is in the old system, pre-2012, then there was an upper age limit that they had to reach 32 or they could not be more than 32 by the time of the test, okay, for the civil service entry test. So say the exam was given in April, they could, you know, hit their 32nd birthday in May and then we could still hire them for a two-year period as long as that list was still valid. Now, that's the category that we're under. My understanding, and John Cofflin did a little research on it, in, back in 2012, there was an amendment to that original bylaw, it's termed 58A. And that allows a community to still maintain the 32 unless it's a veteran, then they can get up to four years of credit for service in the military. So to be honest with you, I, I don't know why the town never really discussed it or adopted it. I wasn't involved in the administration level at the time, but that's what John found out, is that it's been on the books for a few years. There are many communities that have adopted it and it would not change for a non-veteran, but for a veteran, then it would allow them to credit. But for a veteran, then it would allow them to credit up to four years of service, so we could hire a veteran up to age thirty-six. And interestingly enough, it also kind of coincides that the pension system also allows a veteran to buy back their service. So it, you know, kind of work, ties hand in hand as well. So it's not required, but they could choose to buy back their service from the military, so they could actually retire at the, currently, anyone hired would be thirty-five years under public safety. They'd be able to retire at thirty-one years of service, so.
Excellent, well, thank you for bringing this forward. I, I support, I mean, I, I don't see any downside. I don't know if there's any risks we're not thinking about, but certainly, from a recruitment perspective, it seems like a good idea, and certainly to support our veterans. I, I think it's a great idea.
And just a reminder, tonight, we're just submitting these, but we'll hear them at another meeting here in a couple of weeks. But tonight, tonight's the submitted of, to the warrant.
Any questions or comments?
No, I mean, I'm, I'm looking at the statute, and this would be in action where the town would be accepting the statute. It doesn't obligate us to do anything.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah, so this came about because a resident asked me about joining the fire service. Who, who was a, he was an EMT or paramedic? I forget, but.
I don't remember.
Anyway, and he wanted to join the fire service, so I called Steve, and I tried to, said, hey, we need people to join. And Steve's like, well, how, how old is he? I'm like, well, he was a high school classmate of mine. Steve goes, oh, he's way too old. That's, that, that was your exact word, actually. So, but then he said, but he said, but there's, you know, and he brought to my attention, there's, there's an exception in civil service for veterans. And he said, I don't know why the town's never adopted this. So I spoke to Steve a couple, a little more, talked to Chief Jones and John Coughlin, and this would allow veterans to, for every year of active duty, they could join later, so it's up to four years. But if you served on active duty for two years, you'd have to join at thirty-four. And both veterans, as Art would know, are obligated to about a four-year stint on active duty, either through ROTC scholarship or a term of enlistment, so the four years is there. But this, adopting this helps us get, it helps with our recruitment with our police and fire, and it also helps veterans. So I think it's great, and I appreciate you mentioning to me in our conversation, because I think it's, you know, it serves two great purposes that we're looking to do as a board, so thank you.
Yes, thank you for bringing this forward. All right, so we're, well, we are voting to submit, but we'll do that after we review all of them, okay? Thank you, chief.
Thanks, chief.
Okay, Building Department Revolving Fund.
This is one of our perennial articles, so every year, town meeting needs to set the, the limit of expenditures from the Building Department Revolving Fund, as well as the Elder Services Revolving Fund. So we're proposing, similar to recent years, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars here for FY twenty-five. The total budgeted expenditures, which is, mostly goes towards our plumbing, gas, and electrical inspectors and some other admin staff, is three twenty-nine, so it's in line with what we expect with a little bit of a cushion. And when we come back for the hearing, we can go into more of like the trends over time and how we might need to evaluate this in the future, like for twenty-six and beyond.
Okay. Any questions at this point?
No questions.
Okay. All right, next is transfer funds to the reserve fund.
So this is a placeholder article, also a perennial, we've used it most years, not all. But typically, at the end of the year, we often need to replenish our reserve fund from unassigned fund balance, and that's to cover extraordinary unforeseen items that arise during the year. So this is something that we do in town meeting that's for the current fiscal year, not the coming fiscal year. We won't yet know an amount, that's always at the last minute, close to town meeting.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
Questions.
And next is transfer to tax mitigation stabilization fund.
This is not a perennial article, but as you recall, in last spring, we established the tax mitigation stabilization fund. This was part of our FY twenty-four to twenty-eight financial management plan. We put an initial million dollars into that fund so that we can use it to help close budget gaps in the future. We will propose, or we'll recommend an amount going in this year, we're still working on that. But in the meantime, we'd like to be able to have the article on the warrant.
Great.
Absolutely.
Any questions?
None.
Any questions or comments from members of the public on any of the warrant articles? All right, I'm ready to take a motion. Again, this is just to enter them into the warrant, and then we will discuss further details and whether we recommend them or not.
So I'd make a motion to submit the following warrant articles for the two thousand and twenty-four annual town meeting. Article one, Building Department Revolving Fund. Article K, Transfer Funds to the Reserve Fund. Article Q, Transfer to Tax Mitigation Stabilization Fund. Article V, Acceptance of Mass General Law, Chapter thirty-one, Section fifty-eight A, Veterans Civil Service Appointment.
Second.
Roll call vote, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Excellent. Next on the agenda, appointments, I don't believe we have any for this evening. Next is public comment. Do any members of the public like to ask a question or make a comment? Okay, seeing none. Next, Town Administrator and Select Board Reports, Art?
Nothing more tonight, thank you.
Tom?
Michelle has none. She is, she's laughing.
Running to AdCom?
She had to go into AdCom. No, I don't have any reports tonight either, thank you.
Okay, Bill?
None.
Joe?
Nothing this evening, although happy new year to everyone.
Happy new year, thank you. I just have one thing, I will be at the Veterans Appreciation Event tomorrow night at the high school. The wrestling team is doing their annual Veterans Appreciation Event, so all are welcome at Hingham High. And that's it, I will take a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn, second.
Roll call vote, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. We are adjourned at nine twenty PM, thank you.